I go to Princeton University, majoring in psychology.
I go to Harvard and I'm majoring in economics.
I'm going to Duke and I'm majoring in psychology and global health.
I'm going to Johns Hopkins and I'm majoring in chemistry.
Our advantage, great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. See what's possible for you.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses. You can even earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner.
Orange County Public Schools, leading students to success.
All right, well, good evening, everybody, and happy holidays. We hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I hope your kids are half as excited as mine that there are only eight days of school left, not that they're counting any of them. Tonight, we are going to recognize some very, very special folks. Over the next decade, thanks to the work of the individuals that we're about to recognize, and I really don't give that praise lightly either, literally, thanks entirely almost to their efforts and their leadership in this community. We are going to be able to continue something that we started back in 2002, and that is this school district's renovation of no less than 131 schools, plus 20 additional schools that are now in need of renovation, plus the construction of relief schools for a just exploding population in this county to help alleviate the overcrowding of those schools. Ultimately, thanks for that goes to the voters of Orange County, who stepped up to the plate and approved the sales tax extension this past August, the half cent, the change for kids, as it was aptly named by Mr. Bachelor and his cohorts back in 2002, and stepped up overwhelmingly. I don't remember the exact percentage tick, I think it was 64 percent, is that right, Kristina? 64 percent, which was a tremendous tribute to this district, its teachers, its parents, its our community, their support and investment in public education. Tonight, we are going to recognize those Change for Kids leaders and their campaign that they led on our behalf, so when I call your name, please rise so we can recognize you individually. First is somebody well-known to us, Georgina Rolon, who led the Hispanic or Latino outreach efforts. Next is Roz McCarthy, who headed up our outreach among African-Americans. This was a bipartisan effort, and it was led by a bipartisan team, including our co-chairs and honorary chairs, I should say, of our Change for Kids campaign, somebody who needs no introduction at all, but I will introduce them anyway, former mayor Rich Crodi. Rich? Ernest Deloche, also who headed up our African-American efforts in the community. We also want to thank, and although they are not here with us tonight, we had an illustrious bipartisan group of political support, so I also want to thank collectively former U.S. Senator Emile Martinez, former mayor Linda Chapin, John Burden, and Tico Perez, who could not attend this evening, but who were all our honorary chairs and lent their names to this effort. And of course, Dick Bachelor, who headed up our Change for Kids campaign. For those of you who don't know, Dick is not just the foremost children's advocate in this community, but he's a foremost advocate for children, not only in the state of Florida, but in the entire United States of America, and that's not so much hyperbole or rhetoric, he's actually been recognized as one of the leading child advocates in the United States. We're also fortunate this year that we were able to renew not just our sales tax for the construction renovation of our schools, but of course, what goes on in those schools each and every day is funded by operating dollars, and that is a separate silo of money, and that is a critical silo. The voters of this community under Ms. Moore's leadership and this board's leadership four years ago voluntarily passed a one-mill property tax to ensure that we could continue having an arts program in every single one of our 189 schools, that we could continue to have music programs in all of our schools and cultural offerings, that we could continue to have a full range of athletic offerings, and that we could continue to retain our highly qualified teachers, and we estimate that that money saved the jobs of at least over 700 of our teachers, who we would have had to look very long and hard at letting go were not for that effort. This year, the voters of Orange County stepped up to the plate again and renewed the local option one mill for another four years. It's a maximum term allowed by the state of Florida and by Florida statute. So there's a reason, if you've noticed, if you're a newspaper reader or a television watcher, why you haven't read any stories about Orange County Public Schools being in crisis financially over the last four years, and that's because of the voters of Orange County supporting public education. This year, that effort was led by somebody who also needs no introduction at all, someone who's well-known by this entire community and well-loved by this entire community, and her wonderful husband, who is a former golf pro and current golf pro, who I think we dragged into the public spotlight, but I think he belongs in front of the camera as much as Lauren Rowe, the former anchor at WKMG, and someone who has not walked away at all from community involvement, and her beautiful children who are with us here tonight. Can the Rowe family please stand and let us recognize them as well? And Dick, I don't want to make you feel bad, but Lauren's effort passed by 76 percent, so. Get those competitive juices going if we have to come back and do this again. I also want to thank Mr. Zola Shurencis, and I'd like to ask him to stand. He is with the Orlando Realtors Association. Keep standing, Zola, keep standing, keep standing. And I want Frankie Elliott. Frankie, I know you're busy taking a picture and supporting your board, but stand up and let us recognize Frankie Elliott as well. One of the things that I think was a hallmark of this effort, although it was two tax extensions, renewals of an existing revenue stream, both in the sales tax and the millage, I feel very, very proud that I'm from a community where the business community stepped up big time to support public education. We had widespread support from what is often referred to as the Metropolitan Orlando Business Alliance. That's the Chambers of Commerce, both the Orlando Chamber of Commerce and the other chambers of commerce. It's the Associated Builders and Contractors, Associated General Contractors, and that effort has, oh, Central Florida Hotel Lodging Association as well, and that effort is always spearheaded by Frankie Elliott and Zola and the Realtors, who did polling for us, who went out there in the field and worked for us, who got signs out for us, and they just didn't do it this campaign. They're there for us in everything we do as a public school system, and they are there not just because they recognize the value of great schools to residential values and to great neighborhoods, but because they believe in the mission of public education. So I just want to say again, thank you to the Realtors Association. And now, Mr. Bachelor, if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence, please.
Please stand and bow your heads in a moment of silence. Now, Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going to recognize Dick to speak here in a brief moment. Let me just point out one other thing to the audience, and I point this out every time I speak to a group in our community. Before Dick Bachelor, another community leader, stepped up to the plate back in 2002, not one, not two, but no less than six previous referenda in Orange County, whether for bond issuances, sales taxes, or other revenue streams, had failed in the previous 30 years to support public schools. It was only when Dick Bachelor stepped up to the plate and agreed to lead the effort for our community that we had our first success and our first victory in 2002. So Dick, I'd like to recognize you to say a few words, but again, to say thank you because, well, everybody in this room that we're recognizing played a major role in ensuring the renewal of both the sales tax and the millage. You've been on this crusade with us for a decade and a half now, and we appreciate it immensely. Thank you, Dick.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for having some of my colleagues here today that recognized them, and the work, a lot of work went into this, and a lot of people here, being justified, be recognized, but some could not be with us today. I did find it awkward, though, that you would ask a former politician to lead us in a moment of silence. Something very hard, my wife said something very hard for me to do, but I appreciate the opportunity anyway. If you go back to 2002, when we first did this, we had the infamous group of eight, and of course, Mayor Clotty was the mayor at that time, was helpful. There are some great back-channel stories about how we were able to pass this and how we were able to get Speaker Feeney to put an amendment in an education bill, which allowed us to go ahead and do this with the accountability. There's a lot of back-channel stories of that, and the mayor certainly deserves a lot of credit. The classroom teachers were out front with us, we appreciate that very much, too. I'll tell you, a lot of it has to do with the board and the superintendent and your own staff, the credibility of it. As Kristine Moore pointed out, you know, you had a, you passed about 74 percent, I think, without, here's something that I've just observed, if we spent a half a million dollars and passed it by 64 percent, you spent essentially nothing, but you had Lauren Rowe, and you passed it by 74 percent. So next time, Lauren, in 10 years, can I get you free and save the half a million dollars? I think it'll work out very well that way. It shows a lot of credibility that you have. But then you had all these successes in schools, all the A and B schools, the broad acknowledgement that you received, superintendent's done a phenomenal job, your staff's got a good job, John Moore fortunately was recognized a couple of times in articles of the job he's been doing at facilities. So it really is a tribute to really to the Orange County Public Schools, the school board, your staff, your professional staff, and the parents, the teachers, and the students, too, because I think in the end, the people wanted to support public schools. The one person who's not here tonight is Dana Lankar. I don't think Dana's not here tonight, and she's with Consensus Communication. She was obviously a big help in helping us run this campaign, and we appreciate that. There are a couple of observations I make in closing, and one is that I think there should be a curfew for school board members. That way, you know where Cat Gordon is at any given time. In the campaign, every school board member was working hard, but I would get texts like 2:00 in the morning, "I'm out putting up signs or taking our signs down," and I'm turning over going, "I don't care." So I think you need a curfew. You need to know where Cat is at any given time. Up to midnight, it's okay, Cat, to be out putting up signs and working and saying, "I know," but after midnight, most people go to bed, so just want to throw that in for future planning, okay? But let me just say, really, in closing, that thank you very much for the recognition, and thank you for recognizing the people, the whole team. It was a tremendous team getting things done. But in the end, what it boils down to, as I mentioned, is the reputation of this school system, the school board, the teachers in the classroom, the parents, and the people in this community wanting to do the right. If you go back, and I don't think, and Kristine might be able to tell me, but to pass a half a penny sales tax in the same cycle that you pass a one-mill, you know, tax for schools is probably unprecedented, but it just says that those people in this community care really a lot about their schoolchildren. So all the taxpayers of Orange County became child advocates. So thank you very much, and congratulations to you.
Well, Dick, again, on behalf of the community, thank you. Board members, at this time, I know we'd like to shake each of your hands and hand you a small token of our appreciation. For all you've done for us, it seems somewhat not enough to give you a certificate, but just know that you have the thanks of 189,000 students in Orange County, and you are all truly making a difference in the lives of children. So thank you for all you've done. And at this time, we'll pause, and we'd all like to shake your hands.
I got a shirt on my shoulder. Thank you, my friend. Thank you. I got a promotion. Great, that video was so effective. Thanks for letting your mommy come work for us. Thanks for letting your mommy come. Thank you for everything. Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Thank you so much, the children and the families, appreciate it. Ernest, thank you, the kids and the families appreciate it. Tell your sweet daughter I'm here. Thanks for everything. And the whole community. Okay. A before B. Lauren must have yours. You know, thank you always, always, always. Okay, good. Thanks for always being there. Well, we're busy at Castle Creek, just stay busy at Castle Creek.
Ms. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I thank all who helped us pass those very important taxes and millages. But I did want to mention that the Orange County Council of PTA was very instrumental in working with this effort as well, and I know Maddy Plume couldn't, Cruz couldn't be here, but I wanted to thank them as well.
Thank you.
Great point, thank you for pointing that out. Ms. Gould?
A great representation of how a community comes together, and there were many, many more organizations that threw their weight and their voices behind both efforts, including many of the Chambers of West Orange Chamber, a lot of the economic development groups, because they were really believing and understanding the impact that education has on our long-term growth and future, and just the variety of people that came around tonight and those that also supported really represents that value.
Ms. Moore?
It is true, when you're working on something this large, that it takes an army, but the army really came together, and it was amazing to me, newspapers without even visiting the editorial boards wrote favorable editorials, and we didn't even visit them all, and then you would find them on the list and that sort of thing. There were party publications that put it on door hangers and that sort of thing, so it really, you could tell that everyone was really behind this district, behind our kids, and I think I even saw the teachers and the staff more engaged. I think that the importance of voting and how they really had some power in their own hands really came to bear. So from my understanding, there were at least eight referendums in the state on the November ballot, and all of them passed, but we did pass with the highest margin, so we really just have so much to be grateful for today.
Amen, amen, and amen, and you know, frankly, I don't think I've ever been prouder of this community than after the November election, after they passed both these initiatives, because it really showed where their values were and how much they thought of public education and of our public schools, and that's something that I know we all believe in religiously and fervently. So thank you to the voters and citizens of Orange County, if any of you are watching out there on TV. This all happened because of the voters of Orange County, so thank them. All right, we're going to go ahead and move into our strategic plan update. Let me make a preliminary announcement, what the order will be if you don't have the agenda, because I have quite a few speakers tonight who are here to speak on primarily Teach for Americas. We have a strategic plan update, a unitary status report. I'm only making this as a precautionary measure, just so you don't know and don't think you're being slighted if you're here waiting to speak. We have to do that unitary status report tonight, it's not something we can put off, and it's already been on the agenda for quite a while. After that, we're going to recognize our newly appointed administrators, and you know what I'm going to do, Dr. Jenkins? Let's go ahead and do that first, and then we'll go to the strategic plan update if that works for you. And so we're going to flip those two items, and then we're going to get into the consent agenda and the speakers. So let's go to our, recognize our newly appointed administrator.
Thank you, Chairman. We have two appointees tonight. The first is Jennifer Eubanks, instructional support teacher at Evans High School, will become a new assistant principal at Evans High School.
Thank you, Jennifer Eubanks, thank you, Dr. Jenkins, and thank you for the opportunity to serve the community in this capacity. Thank you to the school board, I'm looking forward to my service for the community. Thank you, Dr. Wright. Thank you to a phenomenal principal, Ms. Gibson Link. I know she knows probably most of you all. She's the best principal I've ever had, and I just started my 20th year, and she is just great, and I know I'm going to learn so much from you. Thank you, Nigel, for my sweet mate's help, Hector, for my mentorship, Ms. Brown, thank you so much, and I have four generations of my family here, so thank you very much. My mom was my first mentor and taught me how to love children, and she opened milk cartons at Riverside Elementary my whole life, and thank you, Dad, for believing in me, and I'm always praying for me. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Celeste Hunter, math teacher at Chain of Lakes Middle School, will become the new assistant principal at Gotha Middle.
Thank you, Chairman Soblet, and the board, thank you as well, Superintendent Jenkins, as well as your staff, and I would also like to thank my mentors, past and present, they're all here today, and I would not be here without you, with your guidance and support. I'd like to thank my family for their faith in me, and everyone here for being here tonight. Have a good night.
Mrs. Robinson?
I just want to say, congratulations to Ms. Eubanks, that's really exciting, I'm very happy for you, and I've had the pleasure to meet you and work with you, and I'm just, I agree with you, you have a phenomenal group you're joining there, so yay for Evans. See you soon.
Ms. Gould?
She's not moving far in one part of the neighborhood to the other part of the neighborhood with Chain of Lakes to Gotha, but welcome to Gotha Grizzlies, Ms. Hunter, and I think you will absolutely love being there as well, so enjoy your term.
On behalf of the board, I also want to say congratulations and thank you. I always like to point out that your appointments really signify one very simple word to this board, and that word is trust. It means that this administration and this board trust your leadership abilities, they trust your skills as educators, they trust your judgment, and most importantly, they trust you with our community's children. So congratulations, your family and loved ones and colleagues should be extremely proud of you, we are. And it's a school night, so we're going to pause for a moment to let you go, because there is a child back there who needs to get home and get ready for bed. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the board, as you are well aware, we have a unitary status oversight committee that receives our reports in segments throughout the year, and then they are all rolled up into a final report, so we are once again starting that cycle with human resources, meaning, and I'd like to remind, for the sake of the listening audience, that under unitary status, it is not that we are under court supervision or under any specific numbers or ratios to meet. This board agreed to have a regular monitoring of the numbers concerning several of our issues, human resources being one of them. And so Dr. Carol Kent will bring you an update on our HR status from that agreement.
Good evening, Chairman Soblet, board members, Superintendent Jenkins, and members of the audience. The report I'm going to review tonight was established in 2010, when OCPS was ruled by the United States District Court to have met unitary status. This analysis contains a copy of the school board policy, GCE, adopted December 14, 2010, which illustrates the value and commitment of this organization to employ a staff that reflects the broad diversity of backgrounds and experiences that characterize our nation. It is important to note that this report also examines diversity in areas of gender, race, and ethnicity across our divisions. Where can you find the report? If you go to ocpss.net, you can click on the school board tab, and on the right-hand side, you will see unitary status, and you can click on settlement agreement. The most important note I want you to remember tonight is that we are in compliance with our unitary status. All of you on the board should have also received a copy of the report on a pin drive, 505 pages for you to peruse at your leisure. When our recruitment team attracts a candidate to OCPS, there are a lot of factors that come into play from candidate to employee regardless of the division. These are the factors that we consider: vacancy rate, budget cuts, the proper certifications and licensure of a candidate, meeting the minimum qualifications for any position, security and performance clearances, a reference check, and then the interest of the candidate to work for OCPS or in Central Florida. When you consider that we have been in compliance for unitary status for years, and even if our numbers remain flat, it is still important for us to examine the areas where we continue to diversify our workforce. It is also important to note that OCPS had a 30% increase in the number of new hires in 2013-14, which has impacted overall comparison of percentages from last year. So raw numbers will also be included in this summary. So if we begin with African-American candidates and highlights from this last recruiting season, you can see that transportation now has a three-year trend increase from 31.82% in 2010-2011 to 38.77% in 2013-14. Exceptional education increased by 1.91% this year, and vocational education increased Again, more highlights in regard to African-American recruitment. In our new hires, we increased 2.26%, or 870 African-American new hires. In our internal assistant principals, increased 3.85%. Our principal pool increased 2.56%. In sitting principals have a three-year trend increase from 22% or 43 principals in 2010-2011 to 25% or 49 principals in 2013-2014. The percent increase in the assistant principal and principal pools indicate that our leadership pipeline is producing additional candidates for our school-based leadership vacancies. Continuing with recruitment highlights for African-American candidates, we had increases in all learning community percentages. Increase, the raw numbers include: East had nine new employees, the North 37, the Southeast employed 24 more employees, the Southwest 52, and the West 51. When comparing all areas with our baseline data from 2009-2010, all areas, with the exception of the principal pool, have an increase in the population of African-American employees or candidates. It is important to note that the decline in African-American candidates in the OCPS principal pool is parallel with an increase in the promotion of African-American employees to the position of principal. African-Americans are being promoted from the pool to actual principalships. Continuing with our recruitment highlights for ethnicity, Hispanic/Latino, alternative education increased by 2.31%, vocational adult education increased by 2.5%, 12-month contract district contract- contract, district contracts show a three-year positive trend from 19.46% in 2010-2011 to 31.21% in 2013-2014. The principal pool had a 2% increase. Continuing with recruitment highlights for Hispanic-Latino, all five learning communities and other areas had a decrease in the percentage of employment of Hispanic-Latino new hires, but they each had an increase in the raw number of Hispanic employees, including alternative education, three, East Learning Community, 12, exceptional education, seven, North Learning Community, nine, Southeast Learning Community, 20, Southwest Learning Community, 11, vocational education, five, and the West Learning Community, 11. Continuing with our recruitment highlights for Hispanic-Latino, the baseline in 2010 indicates that OCPS employed 532 Hispanic-Latinos in these areas, and in 2014 that number has increased to 663 this recruitment season. Sitting principals have a three-year trend increase from 13% or 25 principals in 2010-2011 to 15% or 30 principals in 2013-2014. A benefit of this report is to assist with our recruitment process with precision. So as we continue our ongoing recruitment efforts, we will include the following departments to come join recruitment efforts, or we will develop explicit job fairs to assist with increasing diversity in these specific areas of employment. When we look at gender, we will continue to recruit males in the Southwest and Southeast Learning Community administrators, exceptional education administrators, 10-month contracts, and 12-month professional instructional. More areas of focus for recruitment, we will continue to recruit African-Americans in the Southeast and East Learning Communities, alternative education, vocational education adult centers, 10-month contracts at the district office, exceptional education new hires, and the principal pool. And finally, areas of focus where we will continue to recruit Hispanic-Latino include the West and North Learning Communities, alternative education classified and food service, vocational education adult administrators, 10-month contracts at the district office, assistant principal and principal pools. Superintendent Jenkins.
Thank you Members of the Board, we're certainly happy to entertain your questions, listen to your discussion. That is our report.
Vice Chair Gordon.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, that was very quick, very great, wonderful report, very thorough. Madam Superintendent and Mr. Chair, I assume I could address this to the Board. I am a little concerned about the recruitment in the area of our finance department, and I still have a little concern with the use of, when we contract out sometime with our legal firms, and I do know we have an African-American in the legal department, but I still don't feel that it's proportioned to what it should be. When it was asked of this Board to create a legal department, and I think you all know where my heart was with that, I didn't want it to go out of kilter. And I think if we keep going within the direction in which we're going, it may just get out of kilter if we don't pull it back in. So I would like for us, when we do this, then we do that, that, and that, because there are several nationalities that are being overlooked, and we're doing a great job, and we are within the unitary status, and I love that, and I thank you for that in helping us to keep that. But as it relates to page 13 on the recommendation, I am concerned about the financial department with diversity within that, and if I may be off myself, I would probably like to see a report with that, but I've sat on this Board for quite some time, and I have not seen that increase there, and I've not seen the increase within a legal department that is very dear to my heart. Thank you.
Thank you Mrs. Gordon.
You're welcome.
Board members, other comments, questions? You know, I just have one, and I think Dr. Kent knows what's about to come because I'm constantly talking about this, but when you look at the numbers, and I didn't bring them with me tonight, proportionally compared to our student population, we are woefully below the proportion in our administrator ranks, especially in our APs and our principals compared to our Latino population. I'm not sure you can say the same about our other minority populations where it's more commensurate or approximating the numbers of those other minorities. So I just, you know, want to emphasize that I really hope, and I know I talk about this a lot, that we really actively go out there, and I think it starts by getting qualified Latinos in our assistant principal pool. And the reason I bring it up all the time is frankly, every time I talk to Hispanic or Latino community groups, it's the number one thing they want to talk about, why we don't have more Latino administrators. I've also been bothered for years by the fact that we do have good percentages, but they're clustered. I almost know the numbers by heart in my mind's eye, at least in the Southeast Learning Communities. I've never understood that, I don't think that if you're a Latino administrator, you should be based primarily in the Southeast Learning Community, and that's where the majority of Latinos attend school. I think they should be equally in the Northwest Learning Community, in the Central Learning Communities, in the Southwest Learning Community, but we need to do better on those numbers. I know you're working on it Dr. Kent, but memory serves me, I think our AP pool, last time I looked, and correct me because I may be rolling off here, I think it's about 11% Latino, I'm doing that off memory.
It's actually increased to 16.
Okay, 16, which is wonderful, 16%, but about 35% of our student body self-identifies as Latino or Hispanic.
Sitting principals, I'm sorry, have increased from 13 to 15% in the last three years.
Okay, and APs?
The APs, I don't have that data right here, it's in the actual book. I can disaggregate that for you if you'd like.
Okay, all right, thank you. Board members, any other comments or questions? All right, Dr. Kent, great report, thank you.
Thank you. One comment though, I do believe and agree with you with regard to Hispanic-Latino, one of the things I would like you to review in the report is where we recruit, because we put all our recruitment events in there, and we do specifically seek out Hispanic-Latino instructors so that we can eventually promote them into the pools. That is our goal in our recruitment office.
Well, and I know that you've been making a real effort in the last year and a half, two years, if I'm not mistaken, to recruit from some of the South Florida universities, where we have greater percentages of Latino students graduating with education degrees.
Yes, we research every year where they are graduating the most educators with us with regard to ethnicity each year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that. All right, great report. All right, Board members, we're now into our regular agenda. Let me make a couple of preliminary announcements. Anybody who would like to address an item on our consent or non-consent agenda may do so by filling out a yellow form such as this. You can get these forms from Ms. McGill, who is the lady at the far left-hand side of the dais, and when that issue comes up, I will call on you to speak. You will have three minutes to address a Board on that issue. Please keep in mind, and I make this announcement every meeting, it's not directed at any specific issue, but that's your three minutes to testify, it is not a question-and-answer session. If you ask a question, sometimes a Board member may want it answered, sometimes they may not, but a lot of times that time just ticks off the clock while you're waiting for an answer, and then the three minutes is up. So take full advantage of the three minutes you have to testify your position before the Board. If you have scheduling constraints, let me know. I take these speakers in the order in which I receive the cards. Tonight I'm up to, I haven't counted them, but it looks like about 20 to 25 cards to speak, so I will take them in the order in which they have come up. If for some reason you want to follow a specific order, I'll accommodate that, just let Ms. McGill know, and you know, if it's two or three folks who want to go where I have to another, we will do that. Dr. Jenkins, at this time, do we have any changes to our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, there is one change on Board Item 4.01, that is your personnel agenda, classified employee with the initials SA, is being changed to relief of duty without pay.
Okay. Also, Board members, we're going to move off, if I have no objection, Agenda Item 11.02 to 16.03. This is a matter we discussed in pre-agenda, this is the allocation of the excess dollars for the school construction project, so we can entertain a motion on that, which we cannot do on consent agenda. Okay? All right, Ms. Moore.
Mr. Chair, I know in the last few meetings, we've had a lot of speakers, which I certainly applaud and salute, but I was wondering, it sounds like we potentially have over 20 speakers on, and I believe it is, item, is it 6.01 where the bulk of the speakers are signing up to speak this evening? And so what, if it's at the pleasure of the Board, if we need to vote, I would like to take that item 6.01 and then move it over to 16.05 and put it under non-consent.
Well then, let's do this, I don't want to shuffle it too much, but let's make it 16.02, so it'll be the first thing we take up after we pass the consent agenda. Okay, does that work for you? And then we'll do on the matter of FA at 16.03, okay?
Excuse me Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
You know we've got a public hearing.
We do, I know, I'm not there yet.
3.01.
Yeah, let's adopt the agenda first, then we'll go to the public hearing. So we're going to do TFA or Teach for America at 16.02, we're going to do on the matter of FA, Employee FA at 16.03. I'm forgetting one, Mr. Rodriguez, it's been a long day. Which one? What?
There's this second employment matter, Mr. Chair, and then Item 11.02, which is Ms. Gordon's.
Oh, that's right, thank you. And then we're going to take up 11, what was formerly 11.02, at 16.04. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Okay, everybody understand? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda suggested? It's been moved by Ms. Flynn, seconded by Vice Chair Gordon. Is there any debate or discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Show the consent agenda, or excuse me, show the proposed agenda adopted. All right, Board members, we are now on Item 3.01, which is requesting approval of proposed new Board policy, JFBD magnet school programs. Going to turn it over to Dr. Jenkins. Let me announce to the members of the audience, if it seems like there's very little discussion on this item, it's because by the time a Board policy gets to us, we've had a number of workshops on it already and thoroughly vetted the issues. Dr. Jenkins.
Those are going to be my words, Chairman. Actually, Dr. Bernier is here, if there are any questions, we have thoroughly vetted at our last work session, there were no additional questions or additions to the policy, so we believe it is ready to go, barring any additional comment from Board members.
Board members, any comments or questions on the proposed adoption of new Board policy JFBD on magnet school programs? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve it? It's been moved by Mrs. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Cobert. All those, is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Show new policy JFBD adopted. It's been a long time coming, Dr. Jenkins, Dr. Bernier, thank you. You know, we just did something with no discussion or debate because we have a lot of folks waiting, but that's been a couple of years into making that new Board policy, and I know a lot of us up here are very excited about it and the long-term effect of that new policy, so thank you sir. Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. All right, Board members, we are now on the consent agenda. Is there, yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, there is a second individual who's asked to speak on his termination as well.
Oh, there is.
And it's initials DC. I don't think his lawyer is here, I'm being told by counsel that he may be running late, so you may just want to move that one as well.
We pull that off as well?
You may as well, and then take it up.
All right, all right, so we'll go to 16.05 in the matter of DC. I think to get it in the proper posture, we need a motion to do that, can somebody make that motion? It's been moved by Ms. Gould, seconded by Ms. Cadel. We're moving the matter of DC to 16.05, is there any debate or discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. All right, that's done. All right, we're now on the consent agenda, is there any discussion or debate on the consent agenda? All right, can I have a motion to approve that? It's been moved by Ms. Moore, seconded by Vice Chair Gordon. Is there any debate or discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. Okay, Ms. Gould.
I know everybody saw this, but we have great community partners in West Orange County, and the Heller Brothers have stepped forward for naming opportunities of the baseball field, and I just want to thank them for their support of not only the West Orange community, but the community at large. They have been a phenomenal multi-generational partner to this community, so thank you, Heller Brothers.
Well, you know, you beat me to the punch, I'm glad you said that, because Harry Heller Falk has been a personal friend of mine for 20-plus years, and Harvey Heller I don't know as well, but he's been very good to me over the years, and I saw that on the agenda, and so thank you Heller Brothers, and you're right, they've been a tremendous asset, and I'm proud that we're naming that facility after them, I can't think of nobody more appropriate. Thank you for saying that, Ms. Gould. All right, we are now on 16.01. Ms. Moore, good suggestion on the consent agenda, thank you. Let all those folks go, that was a good idea, appreciate you proposing it. All right, we are, we have to do this business first and take these things up in the order that we get them. So we're on 16.01, which is requesting approval of officers to the leasing corporation, something we have to do every year under our certificate of participations, certificates of participation. So at this time, I'm going to recess the regular meeting of the Orange County School Board and call to order the meeting of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation. First action item is requesting approval of the minutes of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation dated November 11, 2014. It's been moved by Ms. Gould, it's been seconded by Ms. Cobert. Are there any questions or debate on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed nay. All right, the next item is the election of officers for the leasing corporation. The recommended slate of officers is attached to the agenda item. We need a motion to accept the recommended slate of officers, or a motion for an alternative slate of officers.
So is the motion of the officers?
It's been moved by Ms. Cadel, seconded by Ms. Gould, is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye, all opposed nay. Show that motion adopted.
It's adjourned.
Thank you, it's been moved, is there any opposition to that? Show the leasing corporation meeting adjourned, and we are now calling back into order the regular meeting of the School Board. All right. We have, Dr. Jenkins, at this time, we're on 16.02, which is, which was a grant application for Teach for America. Dr. Jenkins, let me turn it over to you first to address the application.
Thank you Chairman, a couple of comments I'd like to make for the benefit of the listening viewers and those in the audience, the Board is aware of this, but I think it's important that we just be clear. The state of Florida has, with leftover race-to-the-top dollars, offered to large districts grant monies to help set up Teach for America in their organizations. $500,000 is the grant being provided, offered to Orange County Public Schools. We will supplement those dollars with Title I dollars. There are no general operating funds except those dollars that would normally hire teachers for vacancies anyway. That is first and foremost a critical point. Secondly, I'd like for folks to understand Teach for America is a national organization that recruits and trains and supports alternative certification teachers. We have about 138 alternative certification teachers in Orange County currently, it means they don't graduate in teacher education, they have to go through a program to get their certification. Teach for America is a route to alternative certification. They are similar to City Year, they come into a district and set up a shop, set up office, and have a support mechanism in place after they recruit and train and prepare those teachers. Critical to their mission is that they support and believe in the achievement of students that are in high-poverty neighborhoods, and so they want to, they request, their mission is to work in those schools. I've delivered to I've delivered to board members, that you can certainly read at your leisure, extensive research about the outcomes that they've been able to achieve in those schools. But I want to be very clear, too, and have spoken actually to a couple of teachers who were misled on this one point. It is not an organization, nor is it our intent, to use it to replace existing teachers. We have vacancies that are difficult to fill in some of our neediest schools. In fact, if the 50 teachers were available to come tomorrow, we could actually place them in current vacancies. And so it is a matter of, and the debate may rage on over alternative certification, the real issue is getting more talent into some of our neediest schools where we have persistent vacancies. And so we are confident that this mechanism, it's been proven, we have outcomes both in reading and in math that are impressive. We are convinced that this will supplement the talent that we currently have in some of our neediest schools, and certainly help fill those vacancies that have been persistent. Resources come from both Title I dollars and from the state grant. Similar to City Year, this organization does their own fundraising as well to support the setup of their office. No less than about 17 different articles, I believe, are summarized for you that give you clear indication. We want this talent for our children, and it is not to replace students, current teachers, it is to fill vacancies. And we are convinced this coming year that we'll have just as much of a need in some of our neediest schools. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for the superintendent. Who's currently teaching those vacancies now? Do we have co-teaching, or do we have substitutes? I mean, who's, who, where are those students now being taught?
We have two sources in general. It may vary from school to school. We have substitutes. Kelly Services, if you recall, quite often have individuals who do not want to work or commit to a full-time job, but may have a degree, may not be a teaching degree. Kelly Services provides our substitute services. In some of our schools, where we have coaches that are supposed to be supporting all of the students and all of the teachers, those coaches have been placed in those classrooms to serve the needs of those students as well.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Cadel.
I, too, have a question for the superintendent. One of the emails that came across our desk today made reference to the fact that Teach for America volunteers or teachers only commit to two years. When we go out and we recruit a new teacher, do they commit to us that they're going to stay more than one year?
No, certainly we want our new recruits to stay with us, but there is no commitment at that point. In fact, particularly in schools with high-poverty issues, the Teach for America tenure, I believe, outpaces standard brand-new teachers.
Okay, because that was one of the things that, I don't know if everyone got, but I got, referring to the fact that they only commit for two years. And in my research, we can't hold anyone to more than that first year. It's an annual contract.
I've got the number before me, I'm sorry. In fact, 90% complete their two-year teaching commitment compared to 83% national average for first-year teachers returning.
Thank you.
All right, board members, any other questions or comments? Okay. Dr. Jenkins, can you repeat that number again for me?
90% complete their two-year teaching commitment. The average for new teachers in low-income communities staying in the profession the second year is 83%.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Gould.
And the average for all new teachers is 86%.
Another concern that I had brought to me was that we were filling all of our positions, or vacant positions, with Teach for America teachers. Can you address the ratio and those other slots that may still be open for teachers?
The numbers that I mentioned to you, those are in Title I and STO schools, meaning our schools with highest levels of poverty. We have periodic vacancies in other schools as well, and through attrition, every year we hire close to 1,000 new teachers. And so that would not, Teach for America in no way could actually serve all of our needs from year to year. Plenty of slots to go around.
All right, board members, any other, any additional questions? All right, we do have a number of speakers. I misspoke, it's not as many as I thought, I just counted. We have 13 speakers. So the first one is, and let me give you the order they're coming in, folks, so you can be ready. We're going to start with Ms. Crystal Roundtree, and then Mr. Carl Howard, and then Mr. Kevin Strang, and then Ms. Cindy Hamilton. Ms. Roundtree, welcome. And if you haven't spoken before us before, it's a legal requirement, we need you to start with your name and address for every speaker, and then you'll have three minutes to address it.
Wonderful. Crystal Roundtree, 13405 Isla Vista Drive, Jacksonville, Florida, 32224. Thank you and good evening, Chairman Soblet, members of the school board, Superintendent Jenkins, and the Orlando community for welcoming me here this evening. My name is Crystal Roundtree, as I just stated, and I have the honor and pleasure of serving as the executive director for Teach for America in Jacksonville. This evening, you all are addressing a potential partnership with Teach for America on your agenda, and I wanted to first thank you all for taking the time to thoughtfully consider how a partnership with Teach for America may meet your needs here in Orange County. We believe that we can be helpful partners in the efforts underway to help expand great opportunities for all students here in Orange County. As an organization, Teach for America recruits, trains, and supports diverse, talented leaders to teach in high-needs public schools and become lifelong leaders in the work to expand educational opportunity. If a partnership is approved, Teach for America core members will apply for open positions in 2015, just like all new teachers do, and will be hired directly by you all at OCPS in your schools at the same salaries as all other new teachers will receive. These TFA teachers will join other educators across Orlando, some of whom are even Teach for America alumni, in working to provide students with the best education possible. In addition to our Florida partnerships in Jacksonville and Miami, we work with about 650 other school districts and schools across the country as one additional source of high-quality teachers. We believe that every student deserves the opportunity to excel, but despite the hard work of talented teachers, committed families, and brilliant kids, we all know our education system as a whole just isn't delivering the same opportunities to students of color and low-income students as their peers. Changing this reality will require the collective action of entire communities, and we hope to be one partner alongside you all here in these efforts in Orlando. We thank you for considering this partnership and for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Roundtree. Our next speaker is Mr. Carl Howard. Mr. Howard, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Do you need my address? You have it on the, okay. 4028 K Lake Country Hill Road, Orlando 32803. My name is Carl Howard, and as a matter of introduction, let me just say that I am a teacher here in Orange County, and that while I work for you, I am aware that I do not speak for you. And I am a board member of the Orange County Classroom Teachers Association. Likewise, my comments here tonight are my own. I have been fortunate in my life to have two grandparents as college professors. I have never missed a meal, I've never had to wear my brother's clothes, and I have, throughout my life, been able to rely on a strong system of support. Indeed, I am a man of privilege, and I have been very grateful for that privilege throughout my life. That being said, I am not here tonight to talk about a concern of my own. Rather, I ask you to consider those who are most valuable and vulnerable in our community, those with the least amount of support many times, and the least amount of privilege. Students and parents in Title I schools are not always well-served by individuals who come to OCPS with only a two-year commitment. If I had told my hiring principal in OCPS, Polly Roper, that I wanted to commit to only two years, I doubt she would ever have hired me. Parents likewise are not well-served many times by the nexus of privatization of schools, Teach for America, and OCPS. Students in Title I schools need the most innovative, most experienced, and most proven teachers, not the newest who have completed a five-week educational boot camp. Classroom management matters, as I hope you know from being in schools throughout your district and our county. Good classroom management and other essential skills of teaching often comes about only after extensive experience, such as earned and gained through internship and student teaching opportunities. Not everyone can teach, and not everyone should teach, and I deeply resent the notion that content knowledge is simply enough, in addition to a five-week training program, to make the difference in the lives of our students in Orange County. Would you, my friends, want a teacher for your child who has five weeks of training as a teacher, and who has made only a two-year commitment to education? After all, teaching is a calling, not a crash course.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Our next speaker is Mr. Kevin Strang. Mr. Strang?
Hi, I'm Kevin Strang, 9941 Surrey Ridge Road, Orlando, Florida, 32825. I wanted to speak about this issue because I've been following it for several years, and I'm very passionate about it. And I wanted to talk a little bit about my own personal training. I decided I wanted to be a teacher before I got to college, and that's why I went to college. And even from my very first year at the University of Miami, it included dozens of hours of observations of master teachers. And that, after that first year, that gave way to teaching activities with a master teacher, giving me feedback and critiquing it. And activity teaching led to doing whole lessons with transitions. And all of that, along with 140-hour credits of coursework, culminated to a full semester internship with another master teacher. You can't replace that with a five-week training program. It's not going to happen. And even with all that preparation and training at a very fine school, University of Miami, my first year was the hardest thing I ever did in my lifetime. And I only got through it because I had a terrific principal, and I had great colleagues, and I had people that took an interest in me. But it was tough, and it was in the inner city. And I can't imagine going in on, you know, with enthusiasm in five weeks of training. It's just not going to happen. You know, above us, we have nine floors and acres of cubicles, and we have master degrees and PhDs and ed leadership certifications in almost every one of them. Let's put our heads together and figure out a better way to put our most talented teachers in these STO Title I schools. There has to be a better way. I don't know if it's through large supplements, or stipends, or, but let's figure out a way. How come when there's an opening, and let's ask the right questions. Why is there 50 vacancies right now in STO Title I schools? Why are teachers fleeing these schools? Those are the questions that need to be asked. Why are teachers fleeing these schools? I just hope that our most vulnerable students need the very best teachers. They don't need temporary teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strang. Our next speaker is Ms. Cindy Hamilton, and she will be followed by Mark Mitchell, by Wendy Lowry, and by Diana Moore. Ms. Hamilton, welcome.
Thank you. Cindy Hamilton, 4199 Tommaso Court, Orlando 32812. First, welcome, Linda. This is the first board meeting I've been to where you've had that seat. It's good to see you there. My concerns with bringing TFA into Orange County classrooms extends beyond only the five weeks of training that they will receive. First, I have to ask, why do we need them? Do we not have enough teachers to fill these positions in Orange County now, and if not, why? If current teachers are leaving the profession, which I know they are, and this is contributing to our shortage, what is this board doing to change strategy to retain them? Are you working to return autonomy to our professionals to minimize the micromanagement in their daily lives? Are you working to eliminate the extensive district required progress monitoring testing that takes away any time they might have to be used in a creative way in their classroom? Are you supporting teachers in making certain that they don't spend all of their personal time working? Are you streamlining all of the required data entry and paperwork so that it is not repetitive? In the recent election, we voted to extend the one-mill tax to support OCPS. In your own promotion videos, you state that this has been and will be used to continue the support of athletics, the arts, and to retain and attract new teachers. This tax generated $96.4 million for the district this year alone, and will continue to do so over the next four years. Is there nothing that can be done about our 104th ranking in the nation for teacher salaries? Spending that money to keep our teachers from leaving their profession is important to parents. Our superintendent and our board members are paid using a formula based on the size of our district. They are all at the top of that list for the state of Florida, while our teachers are at the bottom nationally. The following is from a TFA teacher. The five-week summer institute that all core members receive before being placed in classrooms as teachers is nowhere near enough training. There are too many management layers at TFA, and these layers don't help the organization fulfill its mission, and they actually divert the organization's resources away from students and core members. TFA doesn't listen to credible outside criticism and operates a big public relations campaign to deflect it. The one constant is change, and it doesn't help the organization. Also of concern to me was this statement. Just like businesses and governments often show what they value by where they spend their money, so does Teach for America. When I saw where the money was really going, which was to a lot of national teams, national staff members, national infrastructure, that was not providing much support to our region and was definitely not translating into improved educational outcomes for students, my opinion of the organization fell drastically. This is from a TFA teacher who has been with them for three years, and I encourage everyone to please read the article by Valerie Strauss in the Washington Post. In conclusion, at Opt Out Orlando, we are constantly receiving emails from current teachers here at OCPS and from across the country. The one constant about all of these letters is heartache. Wrapping it up?
Can you wrap up in 30 seconds, Cindy?
These teachers are in agony over what has become of their profession. They are tortured by what is expected of them to do to their students and what they can no longer teach. They feel unappreciated, ignored by administration, and those making decisions about what is best. As I have stated before, our greatest athlete in a, or asset in a public school is our teachers. It is time to invest in them and not to replace them with unqualified, although well-meaning non-teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Mitchell. Welcome, Mr. Mitchell.
Mark Erwin Mitchell, 1020 Webster, Orlando. Good evening, Mr. Soblet, board, and Madam Superintendent. I'm here on behalf of the Classroom Teachers Association as its executive director to respectfully urge you to vote against the arrangement with Teach for America. TFA is not a benign entrant into the Orange County education community. It has a 25-year history of serving to undermine teachers, their unions, and the very institution of public education. TFA recruits, while perhaps individually well-intentioned, are neither prepared or appropriate for placement into Orange County's most challenging schools. This community's most at-risk children deserve fully-trained and educated teachers committed to this community and to its students. TFA's recruits, by definition, have exhibited little or no intent to establish a career in education. Nevertheless, you are contemplating placing them into this community, into this community's most demanding school assignments, after only five weeks of a boot camp-type training. TFA has been a part- TFA has been a part and arguably a participant in the ongoing war against public school teachers and their unions and against the institution of public education itself. One-third of TFA recruits are currently placed into charter schools, not even into the public school systems across the country. TFA was used to dismantle the New Orleans Public School System, the first major district to be completely privatized. In Chicago, TFA recruits were used by the hundreds to replace laid-off public school teachers in the Chicago district. TFA graduate Michelle Ree, when she became, in her 30s, the superintendent of the Washington, D.C., school district, infiltrated that district at every level with TFA graduates to disastrous results. So disastrous, it brought down the mayor that put her into that position. TFA graduates rarely continue on to teach. In fact, Wendy Kopp, the founder of TFA, admits that TFA is an educational leadership organization, not a teacher development program. This is a stepping stone for these folks onto other careers in public education, such as starting charter schools to undermine public education or going on to serve in districts that are privatizing public education or in foundations. In 2012, TFA counted $300 million in assets, and Kopp earns about $400,000 a year. This is not a benign entrant into this education community. Agreeing to this tonight would be this district allowing the camel's nose under the tent. Once TFA is here, their numbers will grow. They will lobby you. They will do political donations to grow and grow. And this board has said many times since I've been here that so much of what's going on in this district is the fault of Tallahassee. One minute, Mr. Sablett, just a couple seconds. That so much of what's going on to teachers here in Orange County is the fault of Tallahassee. This is a decision that you are making tonight. You don't have to make it. It's not a mandate from Tallahassee. So we're asking you to stand up for teachers and send a message that you value Orange County's teachers and the children that they teach, and let's keep this work at home, and let's find a way to staff those schools for our most needy students. Excuse me. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Wendy Lowry, and then after Ms. Lowry, we have Diana Moore and Joshua Katz. I want to ask the audience to indulge me one thing, if I could. Some of you have been in this room for a couple of years. I'm not real heavy with the gavel, but at least do me the courtesy of asking for additional time when that buzzer rings. And I always give at least 30 to 45 seconds to wrap up. But in fairness to the speakers who adhere to their three minutes, don't just announce you're going to keep going and keep speaking. Ms. Lowry?
My name is Wendy Lowry, 14234 Lover's Key Lane, Orlando, Florida. TFA has been something I've been reading for many years, not just today because you're talking about it. It's been kind of a passion of mine for personal family interest. I really want to send a message to each of you on the board that your vote goes so far to send a message to the parents, to the community members that we have, to students, the teachers. You have such a voice to give us a different feeling in our classrooms and our neighborhoods. And are we willing to look at our school, our district? I heard it a lot in another board meeting, the word discrimination. To me, what worth considering doing in these high-need neighborhoods? That's more of an example of discrimination, and it hurts me. Why? In my school, do teachers want to quit? Why are they walking away? And I hear, oh, well, I hear Ms. Cadel say, why are we... They have two years. Teachers don't stay. We don't ask them to stay. Well, let's look and see. How long do teachers stay? We don't give them a contract that's more than a year where they can get those numbers, but we know that teachers who come from TFA, they're not here for the long run. They're not here for those needy children. They're not stepchildren. We need to figure out on the inside. Why are teachers leaving? Why are we not fixing that? What's the problem? I would encourage every single board member here not to go visit your schools as a guest where people put on a show for you. Go to your school, read a book, but take it further. I heard a teacher, actually, in Mrs. Cadel's district tell me that she was inviting... invited to read a book, and she declined. Not you, the teacher declined it. But the teacher had second thoughts, and she said, I should have invited her, and accepted it, and said, you know, come with those standards, come with that lesson plan, come with your scales, come with all of the things that teachers have to do so that you understand what they're going through, instead of trying to see that these people are leaving because they're hurting. And we don't need a subfix of bringing in someone from the outside that has no real intention of staying in the schools. I'm sure there's a portion, there's always a portion, that may move forward and stay in teaching, but that's not the goal of TFA teachers. Your teachers are telling you they're hurting. Figure out why. Go out there and be a part of it. When I hear stability, I don't hear any stability from TFA. I want stability because you care, because your voice, everything you vote on sends a message to us as teachers, sends a message to us as parents. Why is that okay? Why is it okay to just have a TFA person come in and take these positions because they're not filled? They're not filled because something that we need to fix from the inside. Not a Band-Aid. I appreciate you hearing my thoughts. I am not for TFA coming into my child's school district, and I think that's discrimination when we put them in those schools without the training they need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lowry. Next, we have Diana Moore, followed by Joshua Katz, followed by Doug Head, followed by Lauren Kianis. Ms. Moore, welcome.
Good evening, Diana Moore, 1020 Webster Avenue, representing CTA and over 13,000 teachers. I did provide you some handouts prior to the meeting, and I don't know if you had a chance to look them over, but I wanted to focus my comments this evening on the property tax that was recently passed in Orange County. And yes, the Orange County Classroom Teachers Association did recommend that property tax. And I heard you say that you're proud of the community. The community did place their confidence in this school board to follow through with the referendum, but I'd like to read some facts into the record. Oh, can you stop the timer? Okay. The amount of money that the Orange County citizens sent to Orange County schools in 2013 was $86 million from the one-mill property tax, and in 2014, the amount was $96.41 million. So there was a $10 million increase due to the increase in property values. I actually called Mr. Singh's office. The report on how the money was spent that I received in records requests was that out of the $86 million, $42 million was spent to save 710 jobs for teachers. When the $96 million came in, $44 million was used to save 734 teacher positions despite a $10 million increase to the district from that property tax. If you look at our FTE per student by looking at the annual financial report, the portion of our FTE that goes into our savings account, known as our fund balance, is $2,211 in '12, '13, and in '13, '14, that increased to $2,266 per FTE. This is almost 33% of the amount of money that comes into Orange County School District is used to save for a rainy day. Now, Hillsborough County, if you look in the study that I gave everyone, was rated the highest among all Florida counties in teacher salaries for counties the size of Orange County. They were rated 66. Orange County was rated 104 out of 130. We actually ranked 111 in terms of a 30-year career. Palm Beach came in at 86. Dade County, Miami, came in at 90. Pinellas at 95. Polk was 96, and Orange County brought it back with 104. Now, I will say that Pinellas starts their teachers at $40,000, and Orange County starts their teachers at $37,500. I received a disclosure that was one-page accounting for the $42 million and the $44 million that just basically said you saved jobs. I know that our county has grown in students. We're up to 190,000 students. So as a citizen, I will wrap it up. I ask three rhetorical questions. If you paid the $40 million to your current staff, would you have such a high turnover, and would you need to bring in TFA? If the taxpayers would want to start an oversight committee similar to your Half-Penny Tax Cove Committee, how could they go about doing that to ensure transparency? And if you look at the evaluations of all teachers in Orange County, 9,000 were rated highly effective, 3,000 were effective, and they worked very hard to bring the Broad Award to this district. So I would hope that we would consider attracting and retaining those teachers that are here first before we go outside. I have to give you a demand-to-bargain letter because I understand if TFA is getting a two-year contract, according to the law, anyone hired gets a one-year contract from now on because there is no longer a PSC. So we would like to bargain that benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All right. Our next speaker is Joshua Katz. Mr. Katz, welcome.
Hi, Joshua Katz, 20204 Quinella Street, Orlando, Florida, 32833. Ladies and gentlemen, I emailed you about this earlier this week, so I'll give a personal one last plea. Leadership is not saying what you are about. Leadership is showing what you are about. Please do not vote for this grant. Teach for America is not an investment in our students. It's an acceptance of a false leadership premise called disruption, which really means change for change's sake. Somehow, we've accepted this practice as a tenet of leadership in education, yet disruption has nothing to do with true leadership. Teacher retention is an issue that no doubt needs to be addressed, but please address the issue of teacher retention by talking about working conditions, professionalism, career growth, et cetera. Don't bail on the issue by hiding it under the rug with bringing in Teach for America. The business model of Teach for America is temporary solutions, period. There is no programmatic investment in TFA for education to be a career. It's built on disruption. Now, any exceptions to this, and there are exceptions to this, but they are exactly that, exceptions. Leadership isn't about saying what you are about. It is showing what you are about. If we value stability for our students, please invest in, work on, and solve the issue of teacher retention. Demonstrate to our students and families that we value community in our schools and that we'll do whatever we can to bring long-term stability and community to our children. A vote for Teach for America is demonstrating that we value disruption over community, that we're willing to skirt the issue of establishing school communities by bringing in an organization that will place a teacher for maybe two years with a five-week program, and then what? Leadership isn't saying what we are about. Leadership is showing what we are about. Stability and community are not just about the teachers in the classrooms. Yes, our students deserve having a stable teacher in the classroom, but don't they also deserve to be able to come back years later to visit that teacher? And aren't they also deserving of stable deans, assistant principals, principals at their schools? Aren't our children deserving of considering their entire school a community, a stable community? It's not just about the teachers. It's about the school being a community as a whole. And Teach for America has no place in a school that values community. Please address the retention issue, but not by skirting it with Teach for America, by showing that we are about giving our students the communities they deserve at their schools. Invest in teacher retention. Invest in administrator retention and give our students what they truly deserve, which is a school that is a community. Leadership is not saying what we are about. It is showing what we are about. Please show that we are about community in our schools and do not vote for this grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. We now have Doug Head, then Lauren Kianis, Leona Jacobson, and Charlie Glenn. Mr. Head, welcome.
It's nice to be here. It's been a while since I've spoken to you, and I just wanted to come tonight to speak about my opposition to this proposal. I had occasion today to look at some of the grades that your staff have received from state rankings, and I noticed that 80% of the teachers are considered to be highly effective, and of the administrators, 80% are simply considered to be effective, not highly effective. Maybe what we need is administer for America, and we bring in weekly-trained people to administer our schools and keep the teachers who are competent, who are being promoted to principal level, and leave them at as competent teachers. And then we fill in the gaps, something like that. Maybe that's my, to use Mr. Katz's phrase, disruption to the system. I also heard you earlier this evening when I came in congratulating the people who... the voters for voting for more revenues for the public schools. And I am completely convinced that voters who voted for the revenue for public schools voted thinking that they were helping to enhance the quality of education for their students through qualified teachers, not that we were going to then save money, squirrel it away, and in, at the same time, be spending or attracting volunteers to teach our kids. I was a Peace Corps volunteer. I enjoyed the experience, and I learned a great deal, but the benefit was to me, not necessarily to the community I served. I think they benefited, but I think that I was not replacing somebody else who could have been there as a professional in the capacity that I was carrying out. I think it's obvious that the money is there. I think the voters believed in voting for the sales... for the property tax, that they were voting for more money in the pockets of the professionals who teach our kids. They were not voting for amateurs with a five-week set of training, similar to the training I got for the Peace Corps, to come in and replace competent teachers. Everybody's right on the same message, and I urge you to vote against this proposal.
Our next speaker is Lauren Kianis. Can I pronounce the name remotely correctly?
It's Kianacy. It's all right. It's a challenging one. Hi. Good evening, board members. It's nice to see you all. Thank you so much for hearing from us today. I am... My name is Lauren Kianacy. My address is 1719 Gertler Court, Orlando, Florida, 32804. Thank you again for hearing us. I am a Teach for America alumni, and so I am here today to speak in support of the program. I am also an Orlando resident, and I work here in education as an advocate. I help teachers and parents and stakeholders get involved in conversations about education policy at the state level. I grew up here in central Florida. I went to Seminole County Public School. I went to Lyman High School and attended UF for college and wasn't sure what I wanted to do, except I knew I wanted to make a difference, that kind of cliche that a lot of people who come from families with... who volunteer and do things for their community. And I found a booklet on Teach for America and read about it, and page after page of testimony from Teach for America teachers about how this was the hardest job they had ever had, but it made all the difference when they saw change in their students. And as soon as I read those testimonies, I knew that that's what I wanted to be, and not just because it's what helped me feel like I was accomplishing that goal of making difference, but because it was part of a network. That's something that Teach for America has that's, I think, very unique. I was an undergrad education minor, and I had a year's worth of training in education. The five-week program that I received, although it does sound very short, was actually a better education and better preparation for becoming a teacher than any of the other programs that I went through. The training also started as soon as you got accepted into the program. I got boxes and boxes of binders and actually VHS tapes with hours of excellent teaching. I've spent 20 hours volunteering in classrooms to see what it was like so that I could really be prepared. And then in addition, I got support in my first... in my two years. I had a program director who was in my classroom five, six times a year, going over my goals, observing my... very similar to the kind of observation cycles that are used today, observing my classroom practice, meeting with me, and helping me become a better teacher all along the way. And then, being part of the network, I'm an alum now, and I work with other alums. Actually, I've met several times with Teach for America alumni here in central Florida because we're so excited to bring other Teach for America core members here. And our number-one goal is actually to support them and make sure they feel welcomed here in Orlando so that they make Orlando their home. And so that we agree, there's a lot of problems with retention for teachers, especially in our highest-need schools, and that's actually something that we, as an alumni and as a core group, want to work to solve. core group, want to work to solve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kianisi. Our next speaker is Leona Jacobson. Not used to that, Leona. Formerly Rockman. Welcome. And then after that, I've got Charlotte Glenn and Kathy Hedinger. Ms. Jacobson?
I'm Leona Jacobson. I live at 20839 Nettleton Street, Orlando, Florida. Mr. Siblet, Dr. Jenkins, and members of the board. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on this topic. I want to first thank all the Orange County Public School teachers who came out tonight because they want to be here. I know that I've talked to a few board members about this issue, about, you know, the reason why you brought in TFA or why you're considering that. One of the responses is that, you know, we don't have any options because we have a shortage right now, and we have to fulfill the vacancies. Well, let me just talk to you about some of the options that you could consider. We have retired teachers that have retired from the school system that look looking for jobs, that have made 3.0 or higher on their evaluations. They could be considered for these positions. There are other teachers that don't have positions in the county, and we could offer the annual contract teachers that currently only get a one-year contract, a two-year contract like you're offering the TFA teachers. You could give them incentives and training. They could also have the five-week course. If this course is that great, then let's offer it to our own teachers at Orange County Public Schools and recruit those to those schools. I spent 10 years in training and development. I've worked at Orange County Public School for over 20 years, and I believe in professional development. But let's put our professional development where it counts, with our qualified teachers here in Orange County. Let's take the teachers we have, and let's work with them, and let's make them the best, and put them at the schools with the high-needs students. We have to be able to recruit them, and we have to make an incentive package that will help them want to go to those schools. I'd like to collaboratively work with the school system to plan and recruit teachers that could work at these high-need schools. And I just have one question. Do these TFA teachers, are they Marzano-trained? Because all the teachers in Orange County are Marzano-trained. Will they be required to go through Marzano training, and will they have to fulfill the same obligations that our teachers do? Okay. And I'm just asking the school district to consider the options that I've just outlined because these are options, and we do have teachers that still are looking for jobs. And I know we need to fulfill the vacancies, and we want to try to recruit the brightest and the best. Well, let's do it with our own teachers in Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Next, we have Charlotte Glenn. Ms. Glenn, are you still here? Kathy Hedinger. Welcome, Kathy.
Now I have the arthritis during this weather instead of just my stenitis, so hopefully I can stand for three minutes. My name's Kathy Hedinger, 2827 Eastern Parkway, Winter Park, Florida. This has gotten way too personal. It's much easier to sit up there before my granddaughter started kindergarten, and it just breaks my heart. It just totally breaks my heart. So it's going to be really hard. I thought maybe I'd do something that makes more my comfort zone instead of talking from my heart, because I've got a background in math. So I just want to throw out there some of the things that when you look at a study or you consider something like that, you start thinking at third-grade math level. For instance, in something like number of people graduating, all you have to do is see what the average class size is, what are the number of people graduating, and you can figure that out. And it turns out it's 65% in Orange County, which is very close to the 60% that graduate, so a third flunk. And I really dislike when numbers are messed up, which seems to be highly consistent. And it's not just this body. All the other bodies do the same thing. When I see what they do, which is so, so very obvious, there's something in statistics where you look at a very small piece of the puzzle, and you said, well, you know, there's 1,000 pieces of data, but they did well here. And certainly, if you look at eighth-grade teachers teaching math, the TFA students did 1% better. All the other things, they did worse than regular teachers, but that they did better. And even then, I challenge you, it is the short-skirt effect. How's that for being funny? You know, they've got, they're in there all dressed to the nines from Fifth Avenue, and then you have your regular teacher that's trying to pay their student loans. And maybe there's a certain percent of kids that like that, so they get that 1% better. And it's just ridiculous. There's no way that somebody can spend six weeks and have any idea on classroom management. It's an incredibly difficult thing, and we all know this. You know, it's intuitive, as my calculus teacher used to say to get above third-grade math, it's intuitively obvious to the most casual observer. And as I've told you before, I mean, I talked to the computer guy that was on the, that was on the State Committee. I understand the VAM. I understand what you're doing anyway to those high-poverty schools, which is when you decide to institute it, everyone will be fired in three years, whether experienced or not. And you know what they'll be able to say? My boss is an algorithm. You don't believe me? All you have to do is realize the formula. When the formula looks at, they look at the value for the high-poverty school, and even if the principal gives you 100% on their amount, there's no way you can make up for that, no matter what your teacher value is. And I defy you, and the many emails I send you, which have never been answered fully, to show me I'm wrong, because I am telling you, I talk to these people, and I understand that. But I want to say that my heart is broken, you know? I can't believe what we're doing to our children, and I can't believe you're forcing teachers to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hedinger. Next, we have Barbara Berry, and then Jackie Myers. Ms. Berry?
I have laryngitis. My name is Barbara Berry, and I live at 262 Balfour Drive, Winter Park, Florida. And I teach now, my 10th year, at a Title I school at Grand Avenue Primary Learning Center. Prior to that, I was teaching at Lake Silver Elementary School in Ms. Robinson's district. In 1977, I left Seminole County Public Schools after teaching their four years to serve as a volunteer in the Jesuit Volunteer Corps on an Indian reservation in Prior, Montana. At that time, I also had a master's degree in counseling. My colleagues were first-year teachers, and they had no experience except for student teaching, which at that time was a two-year program. The high-poverty needs of the Native American was very similar to the high-poverty needs of the children that we serve in Orange County. They have second-language learners, both Crow and English. They were from abusive homes in many cases, and in all cases, they lived in extreme poverty. Though my fellow colleagues struggled, deeply struggled, after two years of student teaching to be effective classroom managers and also to be effective teachers. It was clear to me that if I hadn't had four years' teaching experience and two years' student teaching experience from the University of Central Florida, I would not have been able to provide any substantive learning opportunities for these children of poverty. I am here to say that it is most important for our children, who are the highest at risk, to give them the best and the brightest. I believe in volunteerism. I believe in teachers who are enthusiastic and youthful. But I do not believe that youthful enthusiasm will be any replacement for experienced, high-quality instruction that our children need. If we do not give them that, it is an injustice, and we can clearly create a problem for their futures. This is a justice issue, it seems, once again, and when we are talking about children of difficult means, we must give them our best shot. If it is an issue of retention of teachers, then let's look at that, as other speakers have said, and look at what we need to do to incentivize or whatever it takes. Grand Avenue Primary Learning Center has a very stable school faculty, as Kat, you know, and that is because we have committed high-quality people and a high-quality administrator. And he's not here, so I can't get any kudos for that. But I want to say that that is clearly what we need to do to meet the needs, to close the achievement gap. We cannot short, sorry, may I have one more second? Thank you. We cannot short-circuit our kids. If Teach for America wanted to teach in schools that were not high-poverty, I might not be here speaking about that, because kids with high poverty need more. And pardon me if I'm being, you know, incorrect about this, but I grew up in somewhat of a privileged background. I didn't need the greatest teachers. I didn't have the greatest teachers, frankly, but I didn't need them because I came from a background of privilege and opportunity. We cannot risk this for our poorest of our poor. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you, Ms. Berry. The final speaker I have lined up on this topic is Ms. Jackie Myers. If I've missed anybody, just put your hand up and let me know. But she's the final speaker. I have a card for, I believe. Did somebody raise their hand on this topic? Did you put in a card? What was your name, ma'am? Rivera, okay. I remember getting a card from this room, but we'll call you, and you can fill out a card afterwards. Ms. Myers, welcome.
Hi, I'm Jackie Myers. I live at 2553 Fiveshire Drive, Winter Park, 32792. I didn't expect to speak tonight, so this isn't very well-prepared. I apologize. I just, the overwhelming, I've been researching TFA. I myself am a Montessori-trained teacher who is going back to school. I'm almost finished with my degree in special ed, a bachelor's in special ed, with the intention of going into the public school system. And I have to tell you that the, this year with my first grader, plus a seventh grader and a 10th grader, I have never been more terrified of the prospect of working, frankly, for you. I apologize, and I don't mean any disrespect, but I see my children that are in a very good zip code. They have no problems, really, at the end of the day. One of them might have some issues with the test, but the other two are going to be fine. There are zip codes that need all of this attention, and I see that your intentions are to satisfy those needs with TFA, and I respect you for looking for a way to solve this problem. I don't question your sincerity. But frankly, putting a teacher in to a zip code in such need that has five weeks of training is the definition of separate but unequal. It is unequal. The last thing I'd like to say is the woman who came up and spoke, saying that she was an alumni or an alum from TFA, also just said that she no longer teaches. I think that should speak for itself as well.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. And then we have Ms. Rivera? Is that correct? Okay. Go on, if you're all set. Let me have you fill out a card when you're done. I have one from Carlos Rivera, but I think that's a gentleman who's speaking. Don't worry about it. You can fill out a card after you're done speaking. Just walk over there and fill out a card, or a new one if we've misplaced it.
My name is Melena Rivera. I come 451 Bonifay Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 32825. I am a parent. I am a wife of a teacher. I am also a current OCPS teacher. I also speak for myself. Many of the things that I wanted to say have already been said very eloquently, offering solutions, offering, all in favor of what is best for the children. So I just come to also reiterate why are there the vacancies. From my experiences, from working with my coworkers, who are highly dedicated, who love their students, who self-sacrifice, my husband even gave a violin to one of his students who couldn't afford one. He worked at a Title I school. He donated a violin. We are not failing our students. OCPS teachers are not failing their students. They are leaving because they are suffering. They are taking anxiety medications. They're suffering from depression because of the practices that have been implemented. Whose interest do you have at heart? I always believed in you. I came to work here really excited 15 years ago, and I was always proud of being here. From seeing my coworkers and knowing how I feel every single day, getting told after 15 years and after an extremely beautiful career, that we're being told that we're just beginning teachers and we're developing and we're beginning. My husband was rated highly effective, top 2% in his first evaluation. On his second one, no. Suddenly, he got worse as a teacher. And yet, at the end of last year, this is his letter from a student, dated June 3, 2014. Dear Mr. Rivera, in the last three years that I have had orchestra, your philosophy of willpower and self-governing and your amazing teaching skills have completely changed my way of viewing life and its ups and downs. Not only have you shown me the world of music, but also the world of literature and the power of the single man. When I entered the orchestra in sixth grade, I thought that I would just learn how to play the cello and read music like the other schools, but you opened my eyes to the power I carried within myself as an enormous contribution to mankind. This is a child from poverty. Learning how to play the cello came naturally because I was learning how to feel the music. To be honest, orchestra was the best part of my day, and it has been that way ever since. Therefore, I say thank you for being my inspiration. May I finish? Thank you. To achieve, my inspiration to achieve and succeed to my full potential and for showing me how, what a very tiny person like me can make a difference with a gigantic soul. Thank you for showing the powerful words of men with unstoppable minds and also for letting me relate to them. I don't think like a student, or a number for that matter, but like a human being that can change the world with music and words. To never stop trying to accomplish what others say are impossible, to never stop showing what I can do, you, Mr. Rivera, are a great man with a strong heart that is said to make a difference in the students, as you have done to me, and that will eventually become lawyers, state officials, historians, professionals, to open minds to the power of self-governing. Thank you for being my favorite teacher, a great man, my friend. And he signed his name, Victor. And the reason I'm saying all this is because Teach for America is replacing teachers like this, teachers who are leaving because of the practices that you have implemented in this county. So I would like to close and ask that you not do Teach for America. And if, as Emerson said, treat men as pawns and nine pins, and you shall suffer as well as day. If you leave out their heart, you shall lose your own. My husband is one position that has been vacated, not because he left, but because he died, because of all the stress that he suffered on his job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera, and we are sorry for your loss. All right. I don't have any further speakers. Is there anybody else I've missed out there on Agenda Item 6.1? All right. Board members, Ms. Gould. Before I go, Dr. Jenkins, did you want to say something before? I'm sorry, Ms. Gould. I just noticed.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Actually, if I made a few comments, it might cut back on some of the questions that might come up from board members, so I made a couple of notes, if you don't mind. Number one, certainly, we are in agreement in our condolences to Ms. Rivera. We believe we have wonderful teachers in some of our highest-need schools. This is not to diminish their work. The truth is, and I think- The truth is—and I think we have to be honest about this—the truth is, it is not a new thing that some teachers find it challenging to work in some of our neediest schools and do not remain. So it is not a new thing that we have higher turnover in some of our schools that have higher levels of poverty. It's not new. Has not just happened. Want to remind the board, we did have a program in place a few years back, probably eight years ago. It's a three-year pilot that the union had to agree to, to pay some substantial additional dollars for teachers in those schools. And when that three-year pilot ended, we were unable to extend any agreement with the union to pay substantial additional dollars for those Title I schools. Secondly, those of you that have been on the board for a long period of time may remember some involuntary placements that we tried to move better talent into schools that had the greatest needs. And that, I have to tell you, was not successful either. It got quite a bit of resistance, and teachers actually were leaving and going to neighboring counties. And so we have had other issues, other efforts, additional pay, which was not agreed to for an extension after that three-year pilot, and the involuntary placement, which does not go over well for those schools as well. But I want to be very clear. It is not to diminish those teachers that are dedicated and doing a good job in our schools that need that talent. We commend them. We want to keep them there. This is to supplement, and those teachers, frankly, several teachers in those schools are saying, "Thank goodness, we need help," because they know there are substitutes and coaches that are in classrooms because we are having a difficult time recruiting. Secondly, I think the information I gave to you, actually, there are 29 articles. If you take a look at them, the research is pretty substantial and supportive of the outcomes that these teachers have been able to provide for students, because this is a student-based decision. Their actual outcomes for student achievement are impressive. Math and science, higher than reading, but in many instances, equal in reading, higher in math and science. Provided that for you as well. Next, I want to be clear. These teachers don't get a two-year contract. I am so sorry if someone misunderstood that. They do not receive a two-year contract. Our contract is with Teach for America. These teachers are under the same evaluation system. They get the same pay as other teachers. They have a support system in place to help them and coach them through it, through the Teach for America program, but they do the same evaluation system, and they will be non-reappointed if they are not successful. The contract is with the organization, which would then need to replace anyone who was not successful. So I wanted to be clear about that. Additionally, the training is ongoing. It's not just the five-week boot camp. It's ongoing nights, evenings, weekends. They work with their teachers throughout the year, and they are also working on a partnership with UCF to help supplement their training, their preparation for their Lastly, I'd like to clarify, because I hate for folks to misunderstand—even on the sales tax language—the word "attract" is not a part of that language. It keeps being misquoted, and General Counsel just brought it up again, just to make sure we were straight on that. Sales tax language actually is about retaining quality teachers. And so—
Mil, not sales.
I'm sorry, the mil, not the sales tax. Sales tax is for buildings. The mil language is to retain. The word "attract" is not in that language. We keep trying to correct it. It keeps coming up. I'd like for folks listening to understand the language is "retain," and it, in essence, was an effort not to have to lay off teachers. So that's important as well. That being said, the bottom line is the research supports good student outcomes. We're looking to supplement, find teachers that are working in those schools who acknowledge that they need additional help because they see that there are vacancies. And higher turnover in schools of high poverty is nothing new. It's something that we've worked on for some time. And I mentioned the two previous strategies that we've tried. I'm not saying this is an end-all solution. We will continue to work on other strategies as well, but this is one means of supplementing what we need in our schools, and certainly a partnership that we endorse. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Dr. Jenkins. We're going to go to Ms. Gould, and then Ms. Moore. Mrs. Gordon's going to take the chair for a moment. Ms. Gould.
In listening to the testimony tonight, I think there's misconception out there. And there's a couple of things that I wanted to try to highlight. One, we have 13,000 teachers. We have an attrition rate of 16%, which is a little below the national average of overall, which is 16.8. And in urban school districts, attrition rate is 20%. We have a national problem of teachers leaving the field. This is just where health care was and still is with nurses, and facing nurses who are coming to retirement age, or that work is physically hard and leaving, and trying to fill that pipeline of talent in different ways. The contract—the grant contract covers, at its top peak, 100 teachers, which is .0007% of our entire teacher population. So we're talking 50 teachers this year and an additional 50 teachers next year. So that's 100 teachers. That being said, you know, it always concerns me when I hear people talking about statistical data that's out there. And those of you who are aware of my background, I have a not-for-profit background. So there's something called GuideStar that is a great base point when you're reviewing not-for-profit organizations. And that usually leads to panels of review organizations. So I went out and started doing a little homework on Teach for America. And one of the sites—there's multiple, multiple sites that have reviewed, independent bodies that have reviewed Teach for America—but one of the sites that I think encapsulated the review well is called the Social Impact for Exchange. And when they were reviewing Teach for America, this is what they said about their impact in outcomes. "The most rigorous research has found that the corps members are among the most highly effective teachers for low-income classrooms in America today." Second bullet, "Independent surveys of principals echo these research findings. Principals express very high levels of satisfaction with Teach for America corp members." Third bullet, "In the last program year, principals employed 10,400 corp members"—and remember, this is all over the country—in over 3,000 schools across 36 states in the District of Columbia. Nearly two out of three of the 248,000 alumni work in the field of education, and half of those are teachers today. Fifty-four—I'm sorry, 55, 40 of those alumni are school principals, 100 alumni school system leaders, 130 alumni policy and advocacy organizing leaders, and 70 alumni have become elected officials. More than 80% of the alumni have jobs that impact the field of education or education issues." And I would suggest you go out and look at some of these sites and these independent reviews as well. My point here is, we have a lot of issues. We have fabulous teachers. My boys have had the best education out of Orange County public schools. I have a junior at Olympia. He's doing wonderful. He's also at Mid-Florida Tech. Fabulous opportunities. But we have vacant positions. At West Orange High School, we have such a high-growth area that we had a lot of trouble filling all of our seats this year. And it—I think we still have some positions that have substitutes in them. That is not the most effective way to help our kids. I am in favor of looking at every single way that we can attract people to the education field, especially talent that has passion, that wants to try to make a difference in our classrooms. I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater and say, "Let's flip the whole system over and throw out our good teachers." That is not what we're saying. But for 100 seats out of 13,000, I think we can't keep doing the same thing we've been doing and expect different outcomes. And you heard the superintendent say, "We've tried a lot of different things," but I don't think that we can stop trying to attract great people to this field. And I see this as a small opportunity, a small window, to bring new talent.
Thank you, Ms. Gould. Ms. Moore.
Mr. Chair, I really wanted to start—I don't know if I'll take it my whole time, but I had a couple of questions for Dr. Jenkins, and maybe I'll get back in the queue with final comments after I hear the rest of the board's questions. Dr. Jenkins, so I understand it's a two-year contract with Teach for America, and so maybe you can explain—this will be my first question—what will happen at the end of that two years to evaluate if we renew or reinstate or continue? What would go into making that decision? I've been pretty familiar with the work of the STO and Dr. Kathy Schuler's work, and so I'm assuming that most of these teachers will probably end up under her guidance. And I'm just curious—you mentioned a list of training opportunities that comes from Teach for America, but being part of the STO, what additional training opportunities would the Teach for America teachers get, being with Dr. Schuler? And the final question is, of course, as you know, I've asked several times—we've had extra work sessions trying—Mr. Slabatia, you know, this has been a passion of mine, how to get more teachers, better teachers, that are struggling schools. And so maybe you could speak, Dr. Jenkins, to some of the attempts that we've made, you know, in bargaining, what have you, for extra pay? I know you did a minute ago a little bit, but I wouldn't mind hearing a little bit, because I know this has been, you know, really the heartbeat of this board the last few years, is how do we meet this need for teachers? And I've been working very closely with the principal in my district, and he called me a couple of weeks ago, very upset, because there had been a shooting. And he has worked so hard and diligently to get his teachers. And when I go there now, I'm just ecstatic. It is the best group. And Dr. Schuler is ecstatic, too. We see a teacher who's in her second year, who—she was so good that she was selected to demonstrate a science lesson to the Poppet Chamber of Commerce. It was just exemplary. And when we got out in the hall, Dr. Schuler was jumping for joy because she couldn't get over the growth in that teacher in one year. But now, I've got the principal calling me because of this shooting. These are young teachers. Their husbands are upset. Their husbands are concerned for the safety of their wives or their spouses. And so I'm like—and I'm upset about it, too. So, you know, I've been brainstorming ways to try to encourage these teachers. I know I'm going to take some customer service medals over to one of their teacher parties and thank them for being there and encourage them to stay. And the county commissioner and I called Sheriff Demings, and we had a chat about the crime in that area. What could the sheriff office do? And I'm proud to report that they are going to do all their paperwork as if it's just, you know, a site right there at the school. They are going to provide extra support in the morning, so when the teacher's coming in the morning, that they feel more confident about their security. And so it isn't something that—I know all of us have just have a great passion for this, and we're trying all kinds of things. So if you could answer those questions, I'll come back with my opinion on the whole program after Dr. Jenkins is done answering.
Ms. Moore, a couple of things. Appreciate your comments, and that is actually one of the challenges that we have dealt with. Beautiful new school and a community that is embracing it, but some challenges in the surrounding community that may impact teacher turnover. The thing about Teach for America is that is their mission, that is their passion. They want to go into those neighborhoods. And so when they recruit, they are finding individuals who want to work in high-need communities, knowing that there might be those kinds of challenges. That's the thing that makes their service so useful in partnership with what we're already doing. I want to be very clear about the numbers, because we're sort of mixing apples and oranges. So Teach for America corp members, when they're recruited, are asked to commit to two years. Our initial contract with Teach for America is for a three-year period. Let me be very clear. There is nothing in that contract that says a teacher has the right to stay if we don't want them. So we can have up to 50 teachers. If we don't have 50 that we're interested in, we don't hire them. So the service is to provide the candidates, but the decisions around selection and where we need to have them working is up to us. And if they do not work out during their probationary period, there is nothing that saves them any different from another probationary teacher. Same contract is in place, same pay is in place, same expectations are in place. So the contract is with the provider. The teachers are annually determined whether or not they're going to stay with us. STO—you're other question was around STO services. We do extensive professional development in those schools to support those teachers with strategies to help find success for our children, and that same training, that same development would be provided for them as well. They are not exempt from the school's professional development and requirements. I will tell you, because I know they do nighttime meetings and weekends as well, and then they have their coaches come and visit them in classrooms to assist them as well.
Ms. Cadel.
There was some reference made to Hillsborough, and it's my understanding that Hillsborough received some Gates money early on for teacher pay for performance in doing the Danielson model. And so is that a factor in the money that the Hillsborough teachers are earning? And I don't know if you have that information right at hand.
I don't have it available. Mr. Collins can certainly provide it for you. I will tell you, there have been—there has been some discussion over a practice of using nonrecurring dollars for some of those pay raises that has—that will put them in a challenging predicament in the future, but I don't want to speak to their rationale behind that. The use of—we do believe we've confirmed the use of nonrecurring dollars for some of those raises, which means they're going to have an issue unless those dollars are replaced.
And I also know there was a reference to Pinellas, and I happen to have talked with school board members from Pinellas, and they have renewed the one mil. I think they just did their third renewal. It's their second or third renewal. And on the pay stubs, it shows, "If the one mil is not renewed, here's what your paycheck will be." They have—and they use that one mil for pay, with the understanding, if that is not renewed, that funding source disappears. And it has—I know it has been on their paycheck, I think, for at least eight years. It was the first time I heard that. Hmm? Yeah. You know, we talked a lot about the—we heard a lot about the equity in the salary and why teachers are leaving. And, you know, when we went to the open-range salary schedule, that was the board's attempt to try to equalize some of these salaries. I was out—I was out in the community today, and it was interesting, because there has been so much talk about TFA. Two people came out up to me out of the clear blue sky, who knew who I was. I wasn't looking for any conversations. And they both came up to me and told me how excited they were to hear that we were looking at Teach for America. I didn't have a sign on my back saying, "Talk to me about Teach for America." They just happened to know that I was on the school board. And, you know, it—one of the things over the years, parents have come up to me who have children or who have friends of children who have participated in the TFA program, and begged me to consider using TFA. And so it's not like this is the first time that we've ever heard about TFA or had people—now, can I tell you that it's 10,000 parents that have come up to me? No. But there are people who like the idea that we're looking at every possibility to fill some openings that we have. Dr. Jenkins referred to it when we made involuntary transfers. I got so many emails from teachers who said, "Do not move me. If you move me, I'm quitting. I don't want to teach at that school." I wish I could tell you that they were cordial, but they didn't want to teach those children. And they were very upfront about it, and I think if we'd given them $40,000 extra, they didn't want to teach those children. They were very adamant, "I like where I am. I work for the school that I work for." And I was like, "I don't know if any of you have looked at your paychecks, but it doesn't say, 'I work at XYZ school.'" It says, "You work for Orange County Public Schools." And so I can tell you, it was not one of your shining moments when you talk about teacher behavior to hear, "I don't want to teach those children. I'm not going there. If you move me, I'm quitting." So we have seen both sides of it. And you said, "Actions speak louder than words." And you said, "Actions speak louder than words." Let me tell you, the actions of the people who told me, "I don't want to teach those children," I will never forget. Because those children who don't want to be taught are the children that are going to be the future of this community. So this is a tough decision. And as Mrs. Gould said, we're not talking about 10,000 teachers, or 5,000. We're talking 50 teachers. So those are my comments at this time.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cadel. I have so many thoughts on this, and this is going to sound very disjointed. I'm sitting here trying to structure my thoughts before I say anything, and have not succeeded, because I just have so many conflicting emotions. First of all, I want to say that, you know, our vote to approve this tonight, if it is approved, in my mind, is not at all a reflection on our current teachers. Not even remotely a reflection on our current teachers. I will say also, I am concerned about the vacancies. I am concerned that I wasn't fully aware this far into the school year of the vacancies. We were always told that we fill these vacancies by the beginning of the year. I don't like to hear that we're into the holiday season, and we have the vacancies that we're being told that we have. Very well aware of the attrition rates as well. I do think it is problematic in the teaching profession. I will share with you, as many of you in this audience know, many do not know, I'm a father of three public school children. There is, though, a gaping canyon or chasm between certain schools that have high turnover rates and those that do not. My two children, two of whom are actually, were taught by teachers in this room tonight. All three of my children have gone through Blenckner. I don't have the actual number here at my fingertips, but I'd be shocked if the turnover at Blenckner was more than 2% or 3% per year, if that. In fact, we've been at Blenckner now for 12 years, and in 12 years, I can count on one hand the number of teachers who have left the profession in 12 years. My oldest daughter goes to Boone. The same is true of Boone. I've been absolutely amazed at the longevity of the Boone Teaching Corps, how long they've been there, and how unwilling they are to move. And that goes to another point that I want to segue to. I will share with you, and, you know, a lot of the debate tonight, or the discussion tonight, or testimony, is really about, not so much Teach for America, I mean, it was from about half the speakers, but from about half as well, it was about conditions in the teaching profession and the state of the teaching profession. So this is a little bit of a peek into our room when we do collective bargaining negotiations. Going to feed off what some of the other members have said. If I were king for a day, and I'm not, I will just share you, with you, my solution to the turnover in our Title I schools, and I've asked for this, and I have argued for this in our sessions, is that we take an approach with the CBA, that we assign teachers to high-need Title I schools, that we allow high-need Title I principals to go out, to go to Dahmerick, to go to Lakemont, to go to Blenckner, to go to Shenandoah, to go to all those schools where folks love to teach, Winter Park High School Olympia, and say, "You know what? Principal of Grand Avenue, Principal of Rock Lake, Principal of Richmond Heights, Principal of Ecclestone, you can go in and you can take one teacher from each of these schools in this learning community. You get to pick, and that teacher has to go teach at that school for a two-year period in return for some compensation as well." I haven't got anywhere with that argument. I guess that's been tried, it's failed. I've been told that we've tried to pay teachers as much as 10,000 more a year to go to those schools. In the past, that hasn't worked, I've been told. And by the way, I'm personal friends with a lot of teachers. I don't doubt this at all. The teachers have said, "If you put me in that school, or move me out of this school or that school, I'll just simply quit and resign. I don't need this job that bad." And that's part of the dilemma that we face. I have some concerns, and I know I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth, over Teach for America and its approach. And I want to share that with some of the folks in this room in particular, because there are some folks in here I respect immensely. I think teaching is a skilled profession. By the way, I think practicing law is a skilled profession. I don't care how smart you are. I don't care if you come out of Harvard Law School, or if you come out of Mercer Law School. I don't think you know what you're doing until you've done it for three, four, or five years. I feel that way about doctors. I feel that way about engineers. I really don't want my medicine being taken care of by some resident who's still in their residency or right out of med school. And if you've ever been in an emergency room, you know what I mean. You feel a deep sigh of relief when the attending walks in that room and takes over the care of you or your child, because you've been in the hands of some resident or some intern until that spot. And I do have a concern for that. But we have other programs that are alternative pathway programs, where we have some excellent teachers who are retired military, retired engineers, retired aerospace executives, people who come out of the workforce, and they make great teachers. Because I think fundamentally, what you need to be a great teacher is you have to want to be in the classroom. And I will share with you, I have, my children have had overwhelmingly phenomenal teachers, but we've had our share, not a lot, a handful. And I'm speaking to a crowd where some of us, y'all know my family real well, we've had a handful of teachers, it's very apparent, the first week of school, they just really don't want to be in that classroom. And they really don't want to be teaching anymore. And every parent in that school knows it. And we all gossip and say, "You don't want to get Mr. Jones, or Ms. Smith, or whatever teacher, because they're just punching the clock and paying their dues until they get their retirement pay." So what I like about Teach for America is we're getting people who want to be teaching. They want to be in those schools. They want to be teaching in those high-poverty schools. The same way anybody who comes out of an alternative certification program wants to be in those schools as well. So for that reason, I'm going to support it. You know, superintendent, I really want to look at the data as we go along this path in the next two, three years. I'm hopeful that the retention levels are as high or higher than our students or our teachers coming out of the colleges of education. Ms. Roundtree, I do want to say one thing to you, and I rarely do this, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I don't know where you're at in the Teach for America hierarchy, but the superintendent doesn't even know this yet, I'm going to ask to speak with whoever's in charge of the program when they come here. The one thing I really have a concern about with Teach for America, though, is a concern I had and something I experienced with City Year. And we love City Year. And City Year's done absolute wonders for our students. But I want your organization to not come in here with a narrative that we're here to rescue Orange County public schools. Because we've dealt with that a lot, and it hurts our reputation. And after about six months in our schools, I pulled a couple of the City Year leaders aside who had been in other communities, and I said, "Let me ask you, and I want you to be brutally honest with me. Has your experience in Orange County public schools been anything like your prior experience in Detroit, or Chicago, or New York?" And the response, all of them, was, "Oh, my God, no. You guys think you have problems, you have nothing compared to those communities. You have great facilities, great technology, smart students, a committed workforce." So I think that's sometimes what rankles experienced teachers as well, is when a group like Teach for America or City Year comes in with the halo and riding the white horse and saying, "We're going to save Orange County public schools." We don't need to be saved. We want your help, but we don't need to be saved. But we do need your help in filling vacancies and filling positions. And I'm willing to give it a try, and I'm hopeful that it is a long-term solution. And if it's not, then I won't support renewing the grant, and I won't support renewing the program. Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Jenkins, I'm going to ask her a couple of questions, Mr. Chair. But I wanted to ask about, Mrs. Moore, as the president of the union referenced, the PSC one-year contract. And will you be working on that with our bargaining team? Will you address that issue for me, please?
I don't want to take up your time.
Well, write it down. Okay. And then, okay, and then Mr. Katz did give us all an email, and I was really appreciative of his email. And I want him to really understand, and I know that he, you know, he ran for the school board. And what leadership really is, is when you really sit in the seat. And speaking of leadership, we had an awesome meeting on last evening with the Democratic Party. And after you gave your great speech, all of the elected Democrats, from the senator to the city commissioners, and the state representatives, and the tax collector, and the property appraiser, they all rallied into our meeting on last evening. And I want to just take a point of personal privilege to recognize our newly re-elected chair of the Democratic Party. He's in the audience, Mr. Carlos Smith. Will you please stand before us? Thank you. He was highly recommended, and overwhelmingly won with over 70-something percent of the vote. So he was contested also. All right? So we know about that. But I want you to know that they did pledge. Landra Robinson was nominated by me, and she was also elected overwhelmingly by the group. And Landra brings an array of educational experience and background to that organization, in which Carlos Smith will be chairing and leading for us. And they did make a commitment to education. I do want to know, we recognized tonight, there were so many groups, and I think I was writing names down, and then I said, "Oh, my God, I can't tell the chairman that this is their night." It was Change for Kids Night, but it had not been for the Democratic Party. But I know I did about 2,500 doors. Bill said I worked hard for the Change for Kids late at night, handing out flyers and stuff at the door knockers. With Carlos getting out there, he was one of the ones that actually put the millage and the sale tax on literature. And we personally carried it to the doors, and those people were going to the pole at 6:45 in the evening. And I know, I'm talking about my own precinct out in the Holden Heights area. We were so happy, it was dark, but we were knocking on doors for the millage. And they said, "Oh, my God, I got to go vote for the mil, and I got to go vote for the sale tax," when we did it earlier. And I want you to know, if he had not done what he did as a leader of that organization, my district would not have known about the sale tax and what to go vote for, because there were so many noes out there. They went out educated, because they, in the midst of all the noes, they voted yes. And I want to give Carlos that. You could give him a round of applause for that, because of your leadership. And I thank you. And I'm going to get back on the agenda, but I did want to do that. I wanted to mention, Mr. Doug had mentioned about voting, and he's a former chair of the Democratic Party as well, about replacing competent teachers. I'm a teacher, and I'm the only teacher, other than Dr. Jenkins, right now on this board. But I'm the only teacher being judged by Marzano. And it angers me when I see educators come forth and refuse to believe that I'm actually a teacher. And I have more years than they do, believe it or not. And I get graded every day. I'm doing Domain II right now. The other teachers are doing, no, they're doing Domain II. I have to do Domain D. But I have to do A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q, R, S, T, U, V, W, X, Y, Z. Okay? I have to also put together a portfolio. I know what we have to do. I did hear that they will be judged. I think I heard Ms. Roundtree mention, they will be evaluated and judged. I'm not, let me tell you where I stand. I need help. And you just haven't brought it to me like you're supposed to. You brought it in the year when you gave me Dr. Lawson. You gave me Dr. Schuler. You gave me Joy Taylor. You gave me, what's my favorite person from Orange Center? Jenny Kennedy. Jenny Kennedy did two years for me. You gave me Bridget Williams. You gave me a couple of great leaders, and you gave me great teachers to work with those great leaders. And you took us to the top. You made Molly Ray an A. Then, when the state changed it, you brought us down to a B. And then it just kept changing and changing, and now they got us back to an F. You got to understand this roller coaster that I'm on. Then I heard one of the speakers say the zip codes. Oh, baby, you got to get away from the zip codes. Because you got Pinewood Elementary, you got Woodwood Park, you got Walker Middle School, you got Cypress Park, you got Lake Jim. I can go on and on. It's not about your zip code. It's about the knowledge that the children bring to the school. It's about the knowledge that the parents have given them. It's about the knowledge that I see every day in the school in which I work, that I got to work with those kids. And you know who I'm working with. Then Olavista had a B, then an A, then a B, then a B. Then they changed the plans in Tallahassee that y'all don't want to talk about today and don't want to go up and lobby, 13,000 strong. We can't, we can't, we can't picket, and we can't walk off anymore, because those of us who walked off back in the 60s got fired. I got fired from Inglewood for a couple of reasons. Okay? But we won the case. People can have babies on the job. I happen to have gotten fired because I was pregnant. Okay? Y'all don't really know. I can go on and on. Okay? I'm trying to tell you what life was like in Orange County. And we had Bs and As. We have a D now at Olavista. Washington Shore was an A, it was an A. Then it went when they changed the rules to a D, 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 D. And now we're an F. We're in that zip code she talked about. I'd be dogged if we are. My children went there. They are honest students, good brains. Because one of them, I'm not very sure about right now. She is a veteran, and came back with a basket case, and I got to deal with it. Carver always did struggle. And we've been wondering why. I need help. But when I went and asked Mr. Blocker, I led the charge, and the board followed me. And I said, "Please, go to Winter Park, ask Dr. Gordon to come over and be principal." But he, I mean, he wouldn't do it. I'm just being honest now, he wouldn't do it. But I did ask. I said, "Ask some of the Winter Park teachers to come over. Ask Blenckner teachers to come over." I name all the wonderful zip codes that she addressed. It's not about zip code. As Joey said, they didn't want to come over. They thought we had lost it. But this board demanded, and not demanded, but we opened it up, that they could come over. Oh, my God. Practically everybody's gone but a few. And Orange Center is the one that have held the most. They are still there, most of them. Then Rock Lake was an A, and A, a C, a C, a D, a D. And now they're a C, and they're in that zip code she talked about. It's not about the zip code. Shingle Creek was a B. Then they got a wonderful A. Kathy Schuler was out there. Not Schuler, but yes, Schuler helped, but Kathy Pope, who is with us. Then we got a C, then we got another C. Population change, another C, then a D. An A school, Shingle Creek, ended up an F. Zip code? I don't think so. Then I can go on to Lake Jim, I can go on to Cypress Park, I could go to Pinewood. I could go, don't start yelling, last time there was a lawsuit. Pinewood, Ridgewood, Walker. At least respect me, so I could give you a little history, because you don't know it. One thing we can say, I need help. The union, I am the longest union member in the building. I've served as vice president and ran for president, but decided to retire from teaching. And Clip and I exchanged position. Diane retired with me. And we both went off into our financial world of joy, making big money. But our hearts burned for the children, and we came back. And that's where we are right now, back teaching, working with the children. I want you to know, it's not about all that. When you have somebody that want to come in and work, willing to help, you got to give them a chance. I know the stories better than you do. Mark told us everything. Mark Mitchell told us. He told us what we know as union members. He told us what we've heard, we've spoken to teachers. But I'm like, "Bill, I've also spoken to people like Ms. Roundtree. Never met her, but I've met some good people that wanted to come in." It is our job, it is a union job, to monitor and to see. This board is not a charter board, and you should know that. Diane is usually here. This is not a charter board. No, I'm saying she's usually here during our meetings when we do charters. And we give them a heck of a hard time. And they only get it if they qualify. You know we've even been in lawsuits with charter. So we're not sitting up here to let any kind of organization come in here and take over. Now you know that. You look at this board, and with Linda coming with her background, she blocked everything. That... You, you look at this board, and with Linda coming with her background, she blocked everything. That was the trigger bill you're looking at right here. We couldn't have done it. So how are you going to say? I say this. I need help. Those few schools named that I called, Dr. Jenkins, have a lot more. They need help. I suggest that we use our collaborative authority and get with the superintendent. We monitor this. There is a period of time, Dr. Jenkins, that you can address, that we have, it's the first year, Joey tried to address it. It is the second year, it is the third year. It is not our operational budget. It is a grant. I'm like this. I've learned to not turn down any money. I have people wanting to help with the K-8 downtown. Do you think that I'm going to turn them down? When I'm sitting up here dealing with legislators that we don't go and lobby? Carlos Smith can tell you who we lobby. We know who lobbies in this room. Do you lobby on the national level? Do you lobby on the state level? Do you lobby on the local level? Did you go to the meeting last night where Bill spoke about education? That's the type of lobbying we need, to prevent me from looking at a list of AAA, D, 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 F. That tells you something's wrong with the system. When you have people that want to come in and help, and it is a grant, we have one of the best grant departments in the world, you gotta at least try it. How could you say no? We turned down some money before. And it didn't do any good to turn it down, because you keep doing the same thing, you're going to keep getting the same thing. And I'm asking my board tonight to give me the help that I need. Because you know that if a teacher's not up to par, I'm going to Dr. Jenkins. If a principal is not up to par, I'm going to Dr. Jenkins. I think I sent you five letters today, of parents saying thus and thus. And you know what happened? We were able to work that out through Dr. John, because it was a misunderstanding. Everybody is stressed. Look how stressed I am. Look at my hairdo. Is this not stressed? Pam's gonna look just like this. No, you look good. Bill looks, what I'm trying to say, guys, it's for the children. It is for the children. Give me a chance to get help. You don't want to come over to my school? If so, Dr. Jenkins got a transfer list, and it is open. Please transfer over to Molly Ray, Olavista, Washington Shores, Carver, Meadow Brook, Rock Lake, Shingle Creek, Lake Jim, Cypress Park, Pinewood, Ridgewood, Walker, and there are many others. I'm not even going to call Christine's. I need help. I can't sit up here and fight. Somebody want to come out of their business, when Diane and I made all that money out there in financial service, they're giving up their life to come in and teach them for two years. I don't care, but it was one, really, Dr. Jenkins, it's one, really. And then if it does well, and we like it, and if CTA and our bargaining team do what they're supposed to do and monitor it, we have moved programs out of this county. When we did not like what was going on, there were three or four major programs that we moved. Trust your board. Trust your bargaining team. You got the best instrument. It is a right-to-work state. You can sit down and talk. And I took that time, because it's important to my heart, that we leave out here knowing that these teachers are coming in to help me and my parents, who's looking at me every day, why Johnny can't read and learn, because they're not going to teach him. And you don't want to leave Winter Park High and come and teach at Jones? You don't even want to send your children to Jones? Then if I say we're going to rezone everybody, and ask the board to rezone, oh, the audience will be filled with red shirts, blue shirts, black and gold shirts, green shirts. We don't want to disrupt you like that. You have a board that's trying to give you a community. Don't block anybody else from getting help if you're not going to come and help. If you don't have a solution, let Dr. Jenkins at least try this. We told her, get us some help. Our job is not to tell her how to do it. We are policymakers. We gave her a policy that we wanted help. We asked her for the help, and she said, this is one way that I would like to do it. When we needed help with all of our volunteer teachers going on vacation, when everybody was going on vacation, she brought in Kelly. Y'all, everybody fussed about Kelly, but everybody happy now, because we all get to go to the Sisters Bowl, we go to the homecoming games, we go to our kids' graduation. Everybody's happy. Nobody come before the bowl and argue about Kelly anymore. All I do is ask you as a union, I'm your member, I'm your life member, I'm your retired member, I'm your active member. I ask you to back us for once, and let's work with these teachers and see how we can educate the kids in Cat District, so that they won't come over to your school. Because they will be coming, if they want to. I'm just kidding about that. They're not going to come. We're trying to keep them in their community and let them learn. That's what I'm trying to do, because the parents have asked. They don't have transportation to get to Grand Avenue nights of all of the meetings. They don't, they don't have that. They can't go across town all the time, unless it's a choice that they make. And in our community, 1,500 kids choose to go elsewhere instead of Jones, and that's fine. And most of you don't even know that, and that's fine. I just ask you to try it. After hearing everybody tonight, I'm going to try it. If it doesn't work, we will turn it back over to the superintendent, and she will have to come up with something else. Mr. Chairman, thank you for giving me those 12 minutes.
All right, rookie. You want to follow that? Ms. Cobert, welcome to the board.
I feel like I've just been to church, so. Amen. Amen. All right. So I am a pragmatist, and what you need to know is I have spent the last few days, since this has come before me, fact-finding and listening. And we've heard a lot of people talk tonight in one direction. And it's very interesting, because I have to be honest, I'm very torn, because this week I have heard from many teachers and principals in Orange County public schools currently, principals who are former TFA teachers, teachers who are former TFA teachers who are now in Orange County public schools and still teaching. So I really feel like I've heard a balance. I have to tell you, this is not something that I would, was initially very excited about. In fact, highly, highly skeptical. I have a couple of questions, and then I have a couple of caveats if the board decides to go in this direction. I understand we do hire teachers who have been through another alternative certification process. And I'd like to hear a little bit of a comparison about that alternative certification process, and how much training do they have versus the TFA alternative certification process? Dr. Jenkins, can you shed any light on that for me?
You need to know, ask all your questions.
All right. Okay. Do I get 12 minutes?
Yeah, 12 minutes.
All right.
We've turned off the clock.
Ask your questions.
All right. So I also have been looking at what other options that we have and what other solutions, and I'm open to any and all solutions that are out there. So it seems to me that we have tried offering additional pay. It seems that we had a suggestion tonight that we offer, you know, two-year contracts, but I don't think that we can do that and just offer other teachers two-year contracts, because we're offering two-year contracts. But we're not offering two-year contracts to TFA teachers. They're getting one-year contracts as well. Retired teachers, bring me the retired teachers who want to work in these schools. I'm open to it. What I would, what I would challenge the people here in the audience whom I have the utmost respect for, and I consider to be my personal advisors, bring us the solutions. Bring us the solutions, because right now, I'm looking at 51 classrooms who are being taught by substitute teachers. That's not okay to me. That's not okay to me, because it seems to me those are not highly qualified teachers. So I'm a bit at a loss. I am concerned about how some of the TFA teachers might be accepted and mentored by our own veteran Orange County public school teachers and administrators. I think that that's really important. If we go forward with this, if we do, we need to make sure that those kids are getting the best by having these new TFA teachers mentored by veteran Orange County teachers and administrators. And I want to remind all of you that I am one of those kids. I am one of those kids who was raised in poverty, and I turned out okay. I'm looking for solutions. If we go in this direction, it's a three-year commitment only. And if we go forward, I'd like to use those three years to invest in solving this problem of placing highly qualified veteran teachers into these schools where we need them the most, because it's not happening. And I would challenge you to form a committee. Come in my office, call me, let's work on it. Let's find an alternative solution. Let's use the next three years, if we do this, to find a better way if this is not going to work. So I agree, it's not a permanent solution. So I am interested in finding out more about that alternative certification process and how it compares. And I have to tell you, I'm still torn. Those are my questions, those are my reservations, and that's what I'd like to see in that three years, if we do go in this direction.
Thank you, Ms. Cobert. Dr. Jenkins, do you want to address those questions?
Our alternative, yes, Chairman, our alternative certification program has 138 participants. They are required to do 236 hours of professional development. 236 hours. Most candidates take about 18 months to complete the program. Minimum requirement of 12 months, and some candidates fast-track themselves at a much higher pace. Secondly, to the issue of looking for additional solutions, we will certainly direct our chief negotiator to bring back those issues, including the $10,000 pay that was sunset and was not agreed to. We can certainly bring that back again, as well as some means of transfers as well. We can certainly continue to research all of those issues. I'd like for that to go to the bargaining table.
Stand to your questions, Mrs. Cobert. Yes. Okay. Mrs. Robinson.
Dr. Jenkins, just a follow-up to your response, the 18 months that it traditionally takes those alternate certifications, they do that while they're teaching. They don't do 18 months prior to going in the classroom?
That is correct.
Okay. And I have another quick question. When you said earlier that these TFA teachers would be under the same evaluation, you're saying Marzano, they will be doing, will they, one speaker asked if they'd be Marzano-trained, will they be Marzano-trained? How will that work?
No, they'd be just like any other new teacher coming in. They'll have to go through our training program for that. Our brand-new hires don't come in Marzano-trained.
Right, that's what I mean. We will give them that training.
Correct.
So they will be trained Marzano and go through it. And then also, the 50 TFA core members, how many schools do we anticipate? I mean, where are those 50 vacancies? How many schools will that touch?
We're looking between a dozen to 15 schools. What traditionally they like to do is not to isolate one core member in a school alone. They like to have them two or three, because there's going to be a visiting support person that goes around to work with them as well. So anywhere from 12 to 15 schools, potentially. Where we have vacancies today is not guaranteed, where we'll have the need when the school year starts up again. But you can pretty much guess that it'll be in some of our most challenging schools again.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to kind of make sure we aren't putting all 50 of them in one school.
No.
I knew that, but I just kind of wanted to make that comment and make sure we were on the same page with that.
Correct.
I don't really have a whole lot left to say. I mean, everything's been said. I am very open to having a conversation about how we can get the most qualified teachers to go to those schools and participate. I too have been in those sessions that the Chair talked about, where we've discussed involuntary transplant, all kinds of stuff. And we just, it keeps getting explained to us that it's been tried and it hasn't worked. So I'm open to conversations. Obviously, we need to have the conversations to see what we can do to try and solve the problem. At this present moment, this is, and I agree with this, these 50 TFA members are going to solve our problem temporarily. They are, as one other board member stated, a very small amount of our 13,000 teachers. It's not a large amount. It is solving a crisis that we're in right now. And during that time, I would love for us to explore other options. I understand that everything, those options that we come up with have to be agreed upon by the union. So there are some that we could do without the union's approval. So anyway, I just want to point that out. This isn't going to be a one-way conversation. It's got to go both ways. So anyway, thank you, and I am in support of it.
Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I wanted to say, Mrs. Rivera, I knew Pablo, and he was an awesome guy, and he's truly missed. And thank you for your words, and know that I'm thinking and praying for you and your I also wanted to say that I echo Mr. Sublet's comments about, in no way do I see this as an indictment on the teachers who are in these schools. I have the utmost respect for all of our teachers. I see them working so hard. In fact, the teachers here today, Leona Jacobson and Barbara Berry and Ms. Rivera, I don't know which school you teach in now, but which, okay, like George, I'm not sure about what that, the demographic, but I know Jackson, Middle and Grand Avenue, those are both tough schools. So I appreciate your commitment to being in those schools. Thank you very much. I too had a friend of mine who was a high school teacher, this was back when Dr., I don't know if it's Dr. yet, but Mr. Blocker was still our superintendent, and there was a rumor that we were going to involuntarily transfer students, I mean, teachers again, to some of our inner-city schools. I had a teacher friend, high school teacher reading, teacher, who said, Darrell, if they, if they send me, I won't go. If they send me, that was her initial reaction. I said, well, you know, if they send me. So I mean, this is something that, whether it's fear of the students of the areas or whatever, but it is very hard to get teachers there. Now, what I will say is I think when we hear about the TFA teachers and the coaching they get on a regular basis, I know we have teachers who are getting coaching on the same regular basis. But I've talked to Dr. Jenkins about this. I think sometimes our coaching system can be a little bit heavy-handed, and I'd like for us to look at that as well. You know, rather than questioning everything a teacher does, being over their shoulder, do you want to do this, do you do that? You know, let's help those teachers with real supporting coaching. So mine's a little disjointed, too. So I think that is one way that we can look at those schools and make it maybe a little easier. It's not, it's not a little bit easier. When I was on the Blue Ribbon Panel for Education, when we looked at this, and this was, wow, this was what, already 15 years ago? You know, 12 years ago? When we were looking at the schools that were our struggling schools, we were provided all the demographics on every school, and the mobility rate was so high at our schools that were lower income or high-risk schools. So that mobility has been there for years. It's a history of that mobility. That was before Marzano, that was before performance pay. We might, it was just before. So that's, that's a right. When we talk about Kelly Services, as Mrs. Cobert said, that they're teaching, the superintendent said that they're teaching, there hasn't been an outcry about this. There hasn't been an outcry about our students being taught by substitutes that really are only required to have a two-year degree. There's been an outcry about how they've been paid and how they've been hired and taught, but there hasn't been an outcry about our teacher, I mean, our students being taught long-term by substitutes. long-term by substitutes. So that's, that's an issue we have. With alternative services, as Mrs. Robinson and Dr. Jenkins just said, these are individuals who do not have education degrees and they're getting their certification, they're receiving their certification while on the job for over 18 months. So they're not certified to begin with. So we've had, we've had this situation for a while. Because I have to tell you, I, Superintendent will tell you, I've spoken with her on a couple of times, I've had some reservations, and a lot of that reservation was because it looked like TFA was tied to the reformist effort, you know, that they had these big companies that were tied to them. 5% of their revenue comes from big, big corporate, it's just 5% big corporate reservations. So that was my sticking point. But when I see that they're just another source, because I've done a lot of research as well, looked on both their site, looked at all, you know, looked at the FEA, looked at the other sites, they really are just another source for us to have teachers. And I say, let's see how they feel about Marzano after two years. Amen. You know, that'll show them a little reform right there. So, seriously, let's see what they, how they feel. They're going to get reform in a full dose when they, when they have performance pay and Marzano staring them in the face. So I'm, I will support this. I think it does automatically sort of cap itself. I know someone mentioned we're just going to, you know, fill our, fill our district with all these FEA teachers. It does sort of have a self-cap because it's based on a grant that we're going to get and we can't really, you know, afford it beyond, beyond that. So I'm willing to support it, and I think we do look at ways that we mentor our own teachers that we have right now that are doing phenomenal work and giving their all. But I also say, let's fill a few positions that are vacant now with just temporary teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flynn. Ms. Cadel?
I'm not going to belabor this except that I'm going to give Ms. Gordon an amen. And one of the, one of not my most shining moments representing District One on the school board was when my city commission passed a resolution that said they did not want the children of Evans to come to Winter Park High School. They passed a resolution. And I called Mayor Marchman and I invited him to meet me when the buses pulled into Winter Park High School. And Dr. Gordon was the principal of Winter Park High School, and we handed every one of those children a Winter Park Wildcat shirt and welcomed them to a school that the city commission said, "We don't want those children to come to our school." That was not a shining moment for my community. That is not a shining moment for Orange County government. So you may think that Ms. Gordon was preaching and that it wasn't a reality, but I was sitting at the school board table when I was notified that the city of Winter Park just passed a resolution that said, "We don't want those children." What message did that community send to children that the state of Florida said they had the right to leave Evans High School on opportunity scholarships? So, you know, we do have some moments in our history we, I am not proud of, and that is one of them. For a city commission to say, "We don't want those children." Do you not want them to come shop at the Winter Park Village? Do you not want them to come up Park Avenue? Do you not want them to go to the movies in Winter Park? I mean, it was not a shining moment, and that's all I'm going to say about it.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. And you know, Dr. Jenkins, I just wanted to add, and I know Dr. McLevy, I can never remember Brandon, McKelvey has been tied up, but we really do need eventually get done that statistical snapshot we've talked about because a lot of this data is in that old information about every school. I agree with the fundamental point one of my board members was making. I will say though, however, as a parent, if you want to get an earful about long-term substitutes, talk to my wife. Because we've had a couple, and you know, she thinks I have way more influence than I always already really have, and she just goes on and on, recently in fact, about how can you allow this and how can you allow my child to be taught by a substitute for four weeks? This is inexcusable, it's unconscionable, blah, blah, blah. So I'm, but I agree with the fundamental point you were, you were making, I really do. You know, just so it's not unclear to our union leadership out there, and I hope this board will choose to bring this proposal to the table, and it may, it may not fly, but what I have proposed, because I don't want to lost in translation, is that we allow our Title I or our STO principals to go out and be able to cherry pick one to two teachers per school from non-Title I, non-STO schools, one to two highly effective teachers of their choosing who have to go to that Title I or STO school with a $10,000 salary bonus or some other negotiated amount with a guarantee of return to their home school after doing a two-year stint at the Title I or STO school. So their position would be held open and they could return back to their school with some permanent bump in their pay. I think if we really want to get talented, experienced teachers in our Title I, STO schools, we've got to start treating teaching the way we treat working for IBM or Disney or being in the military or working for city or state government, you go where you're told to go. And if you have to do two years in a challenging school as a talented teacher with the guarantee that you only have to do it one time in your career and you can return to your home school after that, then so be it. Because I think that's what it's going to take to get some of our best teachers over to those Title I or STO schools. Now, I say that, I will share with you rhetorically, I don't think there's a snowball's chance of that getting through the CBA process. Hope I'm wrong, but I don't think there's a snowball's chance, and if this board proposes it, I'd love to see how the negotiations go because I think every teacher, I think our students could really benefit by having some of these super highly qualified teachers in their school for a couple of years. Ms. Moore?
To kind of sum up where I've heard all of you, it seems that we're all in favor of continuing conversations and dialogue about solving this problem long-term. So I think, you know, no matter what happens to the vote, that's something that's very positive, and I think our speakers have certainly let some weight to that happening. But the issue at hand is, to me, is the vacancies, and so I'm looking at, you know, Teach for America teachers, subs versus the coach. And I love to make little T-charts that I've just gone through it and, and sort of compared some issues, you know, with them in terms of their overall education. We know Teacher America coming from top colleges. So they're certainly well-educated, and we know, I know the training, I have seen what STO has done to teachers, and I know that it will certainly turn anyone who's in that program into someone who is top-notch. Do our subs get that kind of training? No, they don't. They don't have any of that training. So now the coach, I love the coach, I mean, they're certainly qualified, but now they're not able to do the job that they were to help all the other teachers. So when I look at that, I'm certainly going to put the check, mark the plus in the box for TFA. In terms of having, I think it is, it's a missionary zeal. I mean, you have to have a love to go there. I went to Phyllis Whitley on the first day of school and had such a marvelous time in my little Whitley costume, that that's the school I keep going back to the most all year. It's just been my love, and I just adore being there, and it's like, I can see over and over again, you know, the difference that I'm making in that school. And in fact, I need to tell, I haven't told Dr. Jenkins yet, because of the beautiful display that facilities put up of Ms. Whitley, I have both of the Popkin Ministerial Associations coming for lunch and a tour in January. I am ecstatic about that. So, you know, it really take, you have to have a love for these schools to do this, go above and beyond. And so I look at TFA, well, that's obviously what they have. The coach does, but does a sub have that love for our particular school? Maybe they do, maybe they don't. We don't really know. In terms of the training, the district training that Dr. Schiller's office gives, we know Teach for America will get that training. Does a sub get that training? No. Does a coach? Yes. So at the end of the day, when I'm comparing TFA to subs versus the coach filling that classroom, TFA still comes out on top. So at this point, until we can solve this more global problem in a better way, I don't feel like I have an alternative but to suggest it, but then keep working for better solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Ms. Gold?
We have a room full of teachers here who know other teachers that may be retired, and I don't know how many of you are out there coming into this area that want jobs. We just had a jobs fair this past weekend that was pretty successful, but out of what I heard, maybe a lot larger pool, about 200 people showed up for the positions that were available. So please keep in tune with those kinds of things that are up and coming, because again, this is not a one-dimension, one-size-fits-all issue. This is a multi-dimensional, and we need to keep attracting great teachers from all aspects. So please keep in tune to those, those jobs fairs, and if you know great teachers, beg them to come to those fairs.
All right, Ms. Gordon, bring us in for a landing.
Oh, bless your heart. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I love what you're saying, and I think that that would not be a difficult thing to do if we don't just probably tell her exactly how to do it. I love what you said. We have tasked the previous superintendent in the past to recruit retired teachers, and I think all Dr. Jenkins would probably have to do if she designed that as a method and a procedure of operation, to go ahead and send an all-call out. But I know that, I know most of the retired teachers because they were at my birthday party, and now most of them, because of Marzano, don't want to come back. But I can teach them, but who wants to be pulled down like that except those of us who love it? And, you know, because I guess we just transition on into it. But it is, it is fun. I have to pay Diana a compliment also, because Diana Moore has, she had an opportunity to go elsewhere when we returned back, and if we had more teachers like Diana, she's not in the classroom right now, but if we had more teachers, it didn't matter what school, she has worked in the inner-city schools. She has worked, she knows what we're talking about. The people sometime that get up and talk, Mr. Chair, won't go, won't go. Just like Joey said, they will not go. They do talking, never step foot, don't even know where Oak Ridge is, they don't know where Orange Center is, they don't know where Olavista is. I don't even want to call the road. They just come in and talk about what's good for the kids, but they have never gone there like a lot of the community people that want to come in and help. And as I stated tonight, this is a group that want to help me. I got to say, they want to help me, and I never looked at it that way, because I'm not a Teach for America person, okay? Because I'm a union person, and I know, I'm like Mark, I was, "No, no, you know, we won't go." And, but I am at the point now where we just not getting where we're going with the Department of Education doing what they're doing, and here you have somebody that want to. So I would, I like what you're saying. We, we have tasked the previous superintendent to do an all-call for good retired teachers that want to come back into the system. We've also, Dr. Jenkins could do again, we decide to task her, we can task her to send out who would like to transfer. And she does that anyhow, I think in April, but she can do that. She can say who would like to transfer. But we're not here to make people uncomfortable, because you do teach, but Joey has always said what I've said, you work for OCPS and not for, and not for Jones. So you, I have my Jones teachers that want to leave, okay? And they said, "Well, why is Valerie moving me to teach this subject? It's on your certificate. She needs you." "But I don't want to teach that subject." Okay, let's find you a place where you want to go. And that is one thing that Dr. Jenkins know because she was chief of staff. We tasked the previous superintendent to find those teachers who wanted to be in their area, but it still left us empty, and it left me empty. And everybody's going to sit up here and look at, look at, "Well, what happened with Cat Gordon? Why, why is she not doing this?" That's why we're asking the superintendent, "Help us." And this is one way that, Mr. Chairman, that she's asking that we could get the help we want. I don't see where there's a problem where this, now we've done enough talking tonight, the speakers were great, they're always great, they're veteran speakers, most of them before the board, and they do know what they're talking about, but we talk a good game, but we don't sit down and talk over the collaborative bargaining table. I'd love to see more of that, being a collaborative bargaining expert myself. I would love to see more of that. I would love to see more of that, and I've said that over and over again. And once we do it, that should be the very first thing on the agenda, because if you ever go back to collective bargaining, you cannot bring ideas like this to the table in a timely manner. So when Joey asks, as a budget committee, and you know, what are some of the things, a priority, I would make sure that what Diana brought to the table tonight is one of the main objectives on the table that we can deal with, and let's talk about it. We got a year, you got people that want to hit the ground running, let's let them go in there and love on our kids. Because I have seen, I mean, I want to give Pastor Timms in Osceola County a round of applause, because he comes into my school every day with about 20 volunteers, and he put those volunteers with different children that just cannot read. You all don't hear me. And listen, they're not getting any pay. They're not with Teach for America. And we have churches like that in our community that, they come in free. Somebody got to care about the children. And whatever we do tonight at this board table, I want you to know, Mr. Chairman, and board members, and to our audience, and our great teachers and paraprofessionals, it's about the children. And if we start looking at what we don't like, I don't, I don't like what I've heard about Teach for America. I know the statistics, but at least here you got a group of people in a different environment that we can monitor, and I know I'm monitoring. And I will go to the superintendent, because kids going to tell. Teachers going to tell, and parents will sure write you a tale. So we keep that ear open, Mr. Chairman. I know that we will be successful, and as we sit at this table, I know it will work, and if it doesn't, we have our union and our bargaining team that could come in, as several of our members said, with a solution. But I'm sure that some child will learn under the love of these teachers that want to come in and probably be teachers. So I, I just think that this is something we got to try and move on. So thank you so very much.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes, Mr. Sublet, I wanted to include President Moore in my kudos for those teachers who were in tough schools. I apologize for leaving you out. I think of you just solely as CTA president now. But, and if there's any other teachers in the audience, I applaud you as well.
All right. At this time, can I entertain a motion to either approve or disapprove the grant application? Move to approve it? It's been moved by Mrs. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Cadel. Is there any further debate or discussion on the motion? Does everybody understand what they're voting for, voting to approve the grant application? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. So the motion adopted. All right. Board members, what's your pleasure? Do you want to take a five-minute break? Okay. Let's recess for five minutes and we'll come back and take up your matter next, Mr. Rivera. All right. We are now on what was 11.02, okay, which we've queued up as 16.04. Dr. Jenkins, can we just have, I know it's in our materials, can we just have Mr. Morris or you or somebody you designate, just give us an explanation of what 11.02 was, and then I think we have a motion that we're ready to make and move on if there's not a lot of discussion on it.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, ma'am. The original capital outlay, the proposed amendment, it has two parts to it. The first part was to take balances- parts to it. The first part was to take balances remaining on projects that have been completed to move those balances over to Dream Lake, Lockhart, and Riverside in order to get those projects started and to pay for pre-construction costs on those projects. The second part of the amendment is to go ahead and begin the planning process for the Audubon Park area K-8. So this would be using impact fees to begin that planning process. So those are the two parts. They're actually separate, because the bottom part is dealing with impact fees. The top part is dealing with sales tax dollars.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mrs. Gordon, I don't have anybody queued up for any questions. Do you have a motion you'd like to make?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to the superintendent and the board. I would like to move to transfer the budget reduction in item 16.04 from Eccleston Elementary in the amount of $534,705, and Pine Lock Elementary in the amount of $355,000, and advance those funds for use in the design, planning, and construction of capital adjust improvements for the project at Richmond Heights Elementary.
All right. Motion's been made. Is there a second of that motion? It's been seconded by Ms. Gould. Is there any, Ms. Moore, debate or discussion? Ms. Moore.
Well, seeing that the money was going to my schools, I guess I should ask the question, then, what impact would it have on those projects if this money was not made available for them?
Mr. Collins, or Dr. Jenkins?
And Mr. Morris.
If the, if the will of the board is not to move the money off of the projects here to those three projects, another option would be to take existing sales tax reserves that have been collected but not already obligated and committed towards those three projects. So we would want to go ahead and continue to move forward with those three. So we would, we would not take it off of those projects based on the proposed changes, but we would take the remaining balance out of sales tax reserves in order to cover the deficit balance.
All right. Then can I ask a follow-up question? So then, the projects that Mrs. Gordon is talking about, would it just be as kind of a substitution she's taking and moving in here, but she's not adding to the project? It's, it's really just a paper transfer?
Laptop.
Is that for Mr. Collins?
Mr. Collins.
If you could explain how, how taking the money from her, her projects of putting on Pine Lock, how that impacts Pine Lock when it comes up? Because I know we were going to be talking about advancing those projects.
Right. I believe the proposed amendment that is recommended by Mrs. Gordon would be to take the dollars that are, that were planned to come off of Eccleston and Pine Lock, that were planned to go to the three projects listed, but rather take those dollars and put them on renovation at Richmond Heights.
And so I have another follow-up. So Richmond Heights was going to get renovated?
No. May I, may I, Mr. Collins, may I address that? This, this is not a renovation. This is, this is a, what we're doing, what I'm asking the board to do is to transfer money that was left over with the Eccleston and Pine Lock. We were going to use existing sale tax money. I don't want to go back in. If we begin to use existing sale tax money, now we're into your project, into somebody else's project. So we know that we were going to do some improvement at the Richmond Heights, because that's where we have our BPK, so that we would not have to build a total school, but a nice nursery. Okay? And it's, it wouldn't be like, you know, a full, it's not going to be, it will not be a full school. But we did say that we would improve that project. But if we improve it, what Mr. Collins just said, we're going to have, if we don't approve this tonight, which is all right, we're going to have to use existing sale tax. But what if you need it? Because everybody has voted. Every project will be covered. So this is actually money that's been left over from the Eccleston and the Pine Lock school. And it has been not allocated anywhere. And I'm asking that at least be allocated to the use, and let's design something decent in that community, planning and construction of capital improvement from money left over from the schools that they did not use. Now, most schools, and I'll give an example, Maitland, for example, they normally will spend everything in their budget. They did not spend it all in the budget. And they, and they need it for where those VP kids, VPK kids are, because that was one of the things that we saw a need for that community. So again...
Okay. Well, let me respond to, so it was, I had, was the question I had. I think there's some other schools that were looking at VPK programs too. But I think I would, you know, prefer Mrs. Gordon to refer this over to the facilities and maybe make this another topic, because I think you're, you're looking for a source of funds for VPK, which I very much support. But I would like to have another few days to look at how this truly impacts the whole program. I, it's just, it's catching me a little bit by surprise.
All right. Mrs. Robinson, let me, let me punch your button, and let me come back to you, Mrs. Gordon, if you want to speak. Mrs. Robinson.
I agree. This has caught me off guard too. And I, and I think my concern is, and I don't know who can address this, Mr. Collins, Richmond Heights had half-cent sales tax dollars last, this, this, this take on the half-cent, correct? That's for Mr. Collins. And, and it got used in another way. Is that correct?
No, they never had sale tax. They never, Richmond Heights never had sale tax.
Let's let Mr. Collins answer it, or Mr. Moore.
Richmond Heights was one of those projects that was beyond the Project 91 on the list.
Oh, it was. Okay.
So it was not funded in the original. And if you recall, the decision was made to...
Okay. So if it's in this next round of half-cent sales tax dollars, why doesn't it already have funding? Is it not, it's not in this new renewed half-cent sales tax that's not on the list?
No.
Why is it not on the list? So it's never been renovated? Is that what I understand? It's never, I'm sorry. It's never been renovated, correct?
Of course, the board hasn't taken action on the second, next round of the sales tax. That's part of the presentation that you'll receive on the 16th. So we haven't had that discussion yet.
So my guess, my question is, how come it was never even included on the original sales tax list? Or was it, and it got bumped somehow?
The students from Richmond Heights were moved to either Eccleston or Washington Shores.
Right. So where did those dollars that were originally allocated for Richmond Heights move to?
There were no dollars on Richmond Heights at the time.
At the time.
Right. The dollars, if, if the board wanted to move forward with a project at Richmond Heights, that would be considered in the next round of new sales tax.
So it's something that would need to be added.
Or the board could take action to do what is recommended tonight.
Well, this is my concern. We're fixing to have a lot of these schools, if we do these K-8 mergers we're talking about, they're going to use their dollars, and they're going to get put in other locations. We're going to Fern Creek, Kaylee, multiple schools that we're purging, out-purging Pine Castle that we're looking at. They then won't have half-cent sales tax dollars to, to renovate those schools either. So that is something we're going to have to look at. And I think, I think this, in my mind, this falls all in the same vein. Richmond Heights, because it got merged with Eccleston, Fern Creek, all of those schools that we're planning to reuse for multiple purposes. We haven't even chosen for all of them what we're going to use them for. Those dollars are, their schools are still going to need renovating. They're very old schools. So I think that is a bigger conversation that we need to have as a board, not tonight, pulling money from here and putting it there for one project. We have other projects that need to be looked at. I think the new renewed half-cent sales tax list needs to be looked at, and some juggling needs to be done in these, we need to look at these schools that are going to be left being used with no renovation dollars. So I don't feel comfortable tonight doing this. I'd like to look at it in a different direction. I mean, evidently, I'd like to hear the facilities work session next Tuesday and see what you're proposing.
Thank you.
Yeah. Let me ask a couple of questions. And the reason, we had two options here. We could either try to craft a solution to Mrs. Gordon's concerns, or we could pull this entire budget item off the agenda. The latter gave me heartburn, because if you look at, and I'd ask everybody to turn to this, if you don't already have it up on your screen, or if you have a hard copy, it also includes the advance in the impact fees for the planning funds for the Audubon Park K-8. And we're not coming back until after the New Year, until January. So I found it untenable, myself, to pull the entire agenda item and delay that process for another, I think we're looking at, it's December 9th. When's our next meeting? I'm not sure. January 8th, 9th, whatever. What? 13th. So we're looking at a 22, 32, 35-day delay, five-week delay. And that's just gave me a little bit of concern. Mr. Morris, I hate to put you on the spot. Dr. Jenkins, can I ask Mr. Morris a question? Do you mind, with your permission, as your staff? And I'm going to take the language in the document at face value. So I'm going to read it literally, and I want to make sure, though, that I understand the literal language that we've typed up here. Okay? It says, "Advance in funding is being requested for fiscal year 1415 to cover planning and design-related obligations. The 2015-16 planned budget for each of the applicable projects at Dream Lake, Lockhart, and Riverside will subsequently be reduced," which implies to me that they're already funded, "will be reduced to offset this advance in funds, thus resulting in no change to overall project budgets." So if these surplus funds from these schools down below don't go to those three schools, Dream Lake, Lockhart, and Elementary School, that money's already there, and we just won't be reducing the budgets of those three schools, if I'm reading the plain language of that.
That's correct.
Okay. So it's not going to affect those three schools. They're still funded. And then it reads, "Thus resulting in no change to the overall project budgets." And then it says, "Projects received additional funds are on the list." And then it says, "This advance in funding will be covered through budget reductions to the following projects." And then it lists those eight schools below that. So we're, we're basically shuffling the money. We're reducing the budgets of those eight projects. We're shifting it over to the three projects above, okay, which then frees up the money we've saved on those three projects above to shift to other projects that are as yet unnamed. Is that correct?
But that shift would occur next year.
That's correct.
What you're doing is advancing the funds to those three projects this year, and then next year's budget for those three projects will be reduced accordingly. And those funds can then be used on additional projects.
So we're doing it to advance it or expedite it?
It's, it's being done to advance the funds onto the projects. Yes, sir.
Okay. And otherwise, all right. Well, I'm glad I asked, then. So you helped to clarify my, if we didn't do it, it would be funded through reserves if we were going to advance the projects up?
And to clarify, the list is projects that are completely closed out. So, you know, those funds are, you know, they're not being removed from the budget. We've completely closed a project out, so there's extra funds that we do, we do that. We advance, you know, going into the design and planning and stuff like that with excess funds from, you know, I mean, it's something that we normally do when we close projects out. If we have leftover funds in that project, we, we use it to advance moving forward with, with the next wave of projects until the budget gets, you know, approved for that project. And then the amount that we've taken in, just like it reads, the amount that we've taken in, we'll take back out of that budget that gets approved.
Okay. Well, thank you for indulging me. Sometimes I have to think out loud to figure things out. So I understand Ms. Moore's concern now, and Mrs. Robinson's concern as well. So what's y'all's pleasure? We have a motion on the floor. Has it been seconded? Was it seconded, Ms. McGill? I thought it was. Can I read the motion again, Mrs. Gordon? And I'm going to go to you, and Ms. Moore next, and Mrs. Gordon. "I move to transfer the budget reductions in item 16.04 from Eccleston Elementary in the amount of $534,705, and Pine Lock Elementary in the amount of $355,000, and advance those funds for use in the design, planning, and construction of capital improvement projects at Richmond Heights Elementary." So that's a motion on the floor. We're still in discussion on that. Ms. Moore, and then I've got Ms. Gordon.
I can't support the motion, because I think this has been a best practice for accounting for the last, how many years? But I can support looking at the VPKs and looking at this whole situation as an add-on at the next facilities meeting. And then, then at that point, you know, we can make some discussions that are more comprehensive, looking at the whole. But I'm just not in favor of piecemealing like this and, and for these three projects. And for Eccleston, I actually, back a couple of years ago, Mrs. Gordon will remember this, I actually allowed Clay Springs to be put back a year in order to advance money for Eccleston, when we went to that project to have a bigger building. So I feel like, you know, we, that my district has advanced that, that money. We put Clay Springs back to free up money for Eccleston. So at this time, I would be a little bit concerned about the funding for the schools in District 7. But again, Mrs. Gordon, I love the idea. I just would like to have the discussion in difference, in a different meeting.
Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you so very much. If we have it in a different meeting, you're going to have a different audience. And you have unitary status. We have a lawsuit pending. And if this, if this is not approved, there's a possibility with the sale tax passing, we had promised that we would build them a school. They are not stupid, nor are they dumb. They know that we owe them a school. When the sale tax closed out, we did not put them on the list. Those, the people agreed to just say, "We're going to move on. You don't have any money." Now, here comes another lawsuit, saying, "Oh, we passed the sale tax. You got all the money you want now, Orange County Public Schools, and you don't even want to help us in any way to get money." And this is not a best practice of OCPS. Let the record reflect that. What we have done in the past is wait to see if any of the excess money that was used in that district, in that school, if it is still needed. Most of the money that is spent on a project, the majority of it, and there's a list that you can get that and request that, is also requests, because what, what is going to force me to do is to bring in a brand-new school, because we have a sale tax. And as a voice of District 5, I would have to advocate for a new school, because that is what the community is asking me for. They said, "You promised us a new school," because there was no money. We did not know if the sale tax was going to pass. Now the sale tax has passed, and you're saying, "Hey, you don't want to do anything for us." So that is why I brought in the motion, to take the money. These are the same children, the same people, the same family where the money had belonged. They really should use it to fund the rest of the playground. There's always something else you need. I mean, I mean, even the other day, the leakage at Pine, Pine Lock Elementary and the bathrooms and things that happened at Eccleston, because they're going to, if anything goes wrong, they're going to have to come back and ask the board for it anyhow. This, this is really their funds. This, this is their funds. So this, this is the only why I'm putting this proposal forward. And I, if you don't want to do it, I'm not going to say, I'm not okay with that, because it would, it would save the district some money. But since the sale tax passed, they may put the proposal with the, with the suit. And I would like maybe Mr. Rodriguez to address the unitary status. Richmond Heights is named in the unitary status, and we have not completed our unitary status list of what we are to do for that community. And then they're going to go back and say, "This board did not do what we said we were going to do." So this is all, I'm okay with what you do, my fellow board members. I'm okay with it, but it's not going to go away. It'll be 80, it'll be, what is it, Mr. Morris, for an elementary school, it would be what? 18,000? Not 18,000, 18...
For a new elementary school?
For a new elementary school, 18 million?
14...
14 million. So 14 million births, money that belongs to them. I would have spent the $534,000 at Eccleston. They got the land. It is a community. Evan's got their community school and everything. We're trying to put community schools... We're trying to put community schools everywhere we go. I would have spent that little bit of money. But I'm for the, I'm for the 14 million. I'm just bringing a proposal that they asked First Baptist mentioned when we were going to clear up that crap and tear it down. Apopka, we built Apopka High School and tore it down, and it was built, I mean, it was a new school. And it was, we had to tear it down and build it all over again and go back out there. You did not tear down the front of Richmond Heights. All of that, all of that ugly safari that we got those kids out is still there. So my fellow board members, whatever your desire, whatever your wish, as I said, it was moved and seconded. I would support this myself, and I would be voting to support it. But I'm okay with the 14 million because there have been lawsuits, and I'm going to ask, there's a unitary status, and there is the fact that Richmond Heights is totally left off the list, and the sale tax passed, and you didn't know it was going to pass. But it did. And they are entitled to a school legally. And I think there are several attorneys out there that would jump at it, and I just couldn't see this. And then we're back in a major lawsuit, which I don't want to see. I think we got a beautiful relationship with that community. It is not an easy relationship because there are still certain people within that community that are unhappy with this board and the behavior of this board for the fact that we asked them to even close. And so those are things that we tried to strategically do, Mrs. Moore and Ms. Robinson, to make it a good community, that we all could make it a learning community and that we all can learn. Because we did promise them a full, three full beautiful schools. And with the passing of the sale tax, they're pretty much entitled to it. And they may fight for it. I hope that doesn't happen, but that is a talk in the community. So this is why I brought it. I said, "We have money left over from the children in that school. Why not use it to go ahead and better that school?" And I would like to know how long the board plans to leave though, you know, to leave the VPK in there because we voted, we know we needed that. There was a need, just like there was a need for the Evans Community School. And it has not cost this board an arm and a leg because we've done it with the county and a whole lot of other people. Okay? So, Dr. Jenkins, if I could get Mr. Chairman, the General Counsel, to comment on it as far as the unitary status and with the pending lawsuits, I would like you to address that, please.
I think we had previously sent a copy of the complaint we received to the board members. We have been, we've received a notice that one of the original plaintiffs was unsatisfied with the terms of the agreement. So we hired counsel. It's our position, and we've already responded in our defense that obviously he has no standing. He doesn't have any children in the school system. He's no longer a student. This lawsuit's over 40 years old. And obviously, when we entered into the agreement, is when the school board entered into the agreement, they did so with an understanding that there was an agreement with the counsel that represented the class, not with each individual plaintiff. And that class is represented by Mr. Tatchkin as well as the defense group. But that lawsuit is pending, and the allegation that they're making in the lawsuit is that we closed Richmond Heights, which, you know, the board action was to consolidate the students into two other schools as recently as within the past year. I know there's been evidence or at least efforts to try and repurpose that school. And I think, in fact, it's open, is it open now? So, I mean, it's opened back up now as a, as a VPK center, as a pre-K center. So it's still being used for educational purposes. What you decide to do as a board, how much you decide to fund it, obviously, is a decision you're going to need to make. And I think Ms. Gordon's attempt is to try and redirect those funds to that school based on, that's her, I'm not going to go further, but that's basically the intent of the motion.
Mrs. Robinson.
Mr. Morris, and is it okay if I address Mr. Morris? Dr. Jenkins? When we agreed as a board and we voted to close Richmond Heights as an existing K-5 school, and we agreed to, remind you, Mr. Collins might have to help with this too, we took the funds, Richmond Heights had dollars in the original half-cent sales tax list. We took those funds and decided to, and I don't remember if it was to expedite or give better schools or something, to move up Washington Shores and Eccleston. Am I correct with that? Is that?
The board voted to use the dollars for Eccleston and expand, we expanded Eccleston. We moved Washington Shores up from an unfunded category to a funded category, and we expanded Washington Shores large enough so that between Eccleston and Washington Shores, they would be able to accommodate the students that had been previously at Eccleston, Washington Shores, and Richmond Heights. So then there was a rezoning where the students that had formerly gone to Richmond Heights were rezoned into either Eccleston or into Washington Shores.
I understand that. My question is about the dollars. When we made the original half-cent sales tax list back in 2000, whatever, when it was originally passed, Richmond Heights had a spot on that list with dollars attached to it, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Where did those dollars go? My impression was they went to Washington Shores and Eccleston. Is that not true?
That is not true because what Richmond Heights was after Project 91.
I understand that.
All projects after 91 were not funded.
So why are they not still there? Why are they not still there? Nobody else after 91 disappeared. Why did Richmond Heights disappear?
They are still on the list.
With how many dollars?
There are no dollars because the board has not taken any action yet for the sales tax extension.
So they're on the list, just like everybody else from 93 on is on the list, correct?
That's correct. But they're not funded yet because the board has not taken action.
Right, but in essence, you're telling me nobody past 93 is funded.
At this time, the board has not taken any formal action to appropriate any dollars beyond Project 91.
Okay. So then Richmond Heights has dollars.
Except for Washington Shores, which was moved up.
Except for Washington Shores. So Richmond Heights, so what you're telling me is Richmond Heights already has dollars to move it up. I mean, same for, you could say the same thing for Kayleigh, and the same thing for Fern Creek, and the same thing for Pine Castle. They're all on that list. They're all on that list, and now that we've gotten the half-cent sales tax passed. But my impression, my impression was that those dollars were going to be used for other things. Fern Creek's money would be part of the Audubon Park K-8. Pershing, Pine Castle would be part of the Pershing K-8. They would be consolidated. Richmond Heights, my impression, at the time when I voted to close Richmond Heights, my impression was that those dollars would be allocated somewhere else. If you're telling me they haven't been, then let's give Richmond Heights their money that they already have on the list. I want to, I want to understand why Ms. Gordon feels the need to take this money. Why does she feel the need to take it if there's dollars? If we as a board can vote to give those dollars that were originally allocated?
Let me clarify.
Yes.
The board has not taken any action yet on any of the dollars from the second sales tax extension.
I understand that.
You're going to have a work session on that on the 16th. At that time, if the board desires to move dollars onto Richmond Heights, which is one of the projects that has not been funded yet, you are welcome to do that. Or if the board wants to take action tonight to do that, you're welcome to do that. What I'm, what I'm saying is that all of the projects that were funded out of the original sales tax went through Project 91. This board has not taken any specific action to fund projects beyond that except for Washington Shores. If the board wants to take action to do that, you would do that after the work session on the 16th, and you would provide that specific direction. And then at that time, we would, we would bring back an amendment to the board to appropriate dollars on every project after Project 91. So at this point, the board has not taken any specific action to appropriate dollars for those projects that were not funded. There has been an approval of a sales tax extension that takes, that begins in January of 2016. So this board will have to take action to appropriate those dollars onto specific projects, and those specific projects are the ones that were on the original list.
Right. And, and I agree. I completely understand. I'm just, I don't know, a little frustrated. I am, I am not in support of this tonight. I want us to have this conversation at a later date when we have that bigger conversation about the remaining schools on the list and where those dollars are going to go then. But that's me.
Okay. All right. Got one more speaker myself. I understand, I think, talked myself out of my understanding earlier on another issue, but I understand, I think, what you're saying, Mr. Collins, and don't disagree with it, it hasn't been budgeted yet. But we could go back and check the minutes. This board has taken a vote at the board table to adhere to the original list. And when we sent the voters at Sales Tax Referendum, we voted to adhere to the original list. So whether Projects 92 through 131 are funded or not in a strict budgetary sense, they are funded in a figurative sense because we have voted to go down, write down that list, 92 through 131. And I don't know, where's, Mr. Morris, do you know where Richmond Heights is on that list?
110.
110. So I think that's a point you may have been making, and I, you know. But why don't we do this at this time? Well, all right, let me go to Ms. Flynn, then we're going to go and vote on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the issue, though, is if they're on the list, they're on the list for a complete renovation, which would be millions of dollars versus here just sort of sprucing it up, but I mean, $500,000 is a lot less than a whole brand-new school. So I, you know, I see a savings there so that if they're on that original list, the expenditures would be a lot more than $500,000 right now.
Mrs. Robinson.
That's my point exactly, Ms. Flynn, is that they're on that original list, just like Fern Creek is. And we're talking about repurposing that building for something different, but those dollars aren't planned, I can tell you, those dollars are not planned to be used at Fern Creek, just like Kayleigh's dollars are not behind to be used at Kayleigh, just like, so the point is, this is a bigger conversation. All of those schools, just because we don't use them as K-5s or whatever they currently are, we chose to repurpose Richmond Heights. We didn't ever have a conversation about whether those dollars were going to disappear just because we repurposed. Those buildings don't go away. They still need renovating. So how are we going to deal with that? That's, that's my point. And I don't think this conversation with this tonight solves that. If that's the case, well, I want to take Princeton's money, and I want to put it on Fern Creek because I've got to repurpose Fern Creek. It hasn't left my district. So I could start taking dollars too. That's my point, is it's a bigger conversation than this right here in front of us. And that's just, and it's just my two cents.
Ms. Gold?
If, if we take the time to look at this with the entire landscape, and it does not come back to us until January, how will that hurt any initiatives that we're trying to get to, what Mrs. Gordon was trying to get to tonight? What does that do to the timeline of what you're trying to achieve?
You asking me? Okay. I mean, from my perspective, we then have to figure out if we can get around, or perhaps take up a motion to go and advance the funding from the impact fees for the Audubon Park re-planning. Other than that, I can't see any impact myself. Well, that's true. And then those other three schools too, would delay those by five weeks as well. Good point, Mrs.
Well, two of those weeks, I mean, I'm sure there's some people working over two weeks, but two of those weeks really are not full work weeks almost anywhere in the world of the, of our local area. So I just want to make sure, I feel the urgency for some of this, and I am not against trying to move some of those projects forward, but I am getting really fuzzy at this juncture of the evening on where it all fits together. I thought I got where the puzzle fit, and I'm not quite as secure in understanding where the puzzle fits together.
And I think I'm stating the incredibly obvious, but I think the concern, Mrs. Gordon? No, I'm not. I think the concern is the, the message it sends if savings on District 5 schools go outside of District 5. That's really the issue.
But don't we really need to discuss that within the scope of the entire landscape, then? Because, you know, there's been...
I think that's what the board is saying.
Right. Because there's been things in my area where I would have been just as, I don't know if my community would have been as happy, but to shift because I saw needs elsewhere. So I think that's a philosophical discussion we need to have, and a pragmatic one, actually. It's less philosophical than more pragmatic on that whole issue. So all the schools that really need, without going back on our word to our community, are prioritized in the right way.
All right. Well, I hear you. I agree. I agree. So let's do this. We have a motion on the floor. I'm going to go to Ms. Flynn and Mrs. Robinson, but we're going to vote on this motion in a moment, and then we're going to have to take another motion. And that motion's either going to have to be to pull this off the agenda, or someone may move to go ahead and move this agenda item forward and have that discussion on the bigger issue at the facilities work session. So Ms. Flynn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Here's why I'll support this tonight. And I think this is a bigger discussion, and I think Richmond Heights is part of a larger discussion outside of the funding. That whole thing is part of a larger discussion. I agree that the buildings that we're going to have available after the mergers do need, do need renovating or work on them. I think that's a given. But we have children in Richmond Heights right now. We don't know what the uses, or I don't know, what the uses of the other schools that have not been closed yet will be. And I think there is time for discussion on that. I agree with you, Mrs. Robinson. I would fight for those dollars too. But I don't think that fight has to be at the expense, not at the expense, if lieu of what the dollars are going to Richmond Heights. I think with Richmond Heights, there's two, they're part of two larger pictures. And one of them, and Ms. Gordon, I know you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but it's in regard to the funding, of course, and it's also in regard to the unitary status. And that's the biggest thing. But there are children in there now. There are children in there now. So that's why I'm prepared to vote on this tonight, and that's not to discount. I applaud you for saying, "Hey, what about my school?" You know, I applaud you for that, and I, and I will support you in that when we get to that point. But I think right now, I'm going to support Mrs. Gordon.
All right. Mrs. Robinson.
The main reason I'm not in support of this for tonight isn't the dollars and where they're going, whether they're going to Richmond Heights, whatever. It's that this needs to be discussed. What if Tuesday night at the work session that none of us have even been briefed on, we decide to give more dollars to Richmond Heights, but we've messed up by voting for little dollars tonight? I don't know. I'm just saying, I think we need to, let's make it through Tuesday before we make this decision. Let's, let's have this go through, and let's, let's commit, I commit tonight to giving dollars to Richmond Heights from the sales tax list, not from this. It's just me.
Ms. Moore?
My other concern is taking, this has not been a practice that we've had in the past, and, and in order to go ahead and continue as the chairman's concerned about Audubon, I'm compared, I'm concerned about Dream Lake, Lockhart, and Riverside, and now we're going to start a new practice, a business practice that was not brought to us by staff, that I'm not sure is, is good accounting at all. And so I'm going to vote against the motion and then go ahead and put a motion back on the floor to pass this as it is. But I'd be happy to bring this up at the facilities meeting and look at it in its entirety because I'm, I am a fan of Richmond Heights. I'm a fan of Maxi. I'd like to move several of the DSEG schools up. I just don't think this is the right way to do it.
All right. I have no further speakers. The motion's on the floor. Does everybody understand the motion and what they're voting on? All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
No. I show the motion failing. All right. Is there any other motion anybody would like to make?
Yeah.
Ms. Moore.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I think the Madam Clerk needs a count of who is for and against.
Okay.
For.
Against.
Against.
Four.
Four.
All right. Ms. Moore.
I would like to move that we approve Agenda Item 11.02, the approval of Budget Amendment Number One to the 2014-2015 capital outlay budget.
All right. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Yes.
Mrs. Gordon.
I would like to include, if we do approve the budget, I would like for us to consider, based on the unitary status, that Richmond Heights be reconsidered, to be considered as a school, and that they get their just reward. Since we sold them a bullet sales by not knowing if the sale tax was going to pass or not, and since the sale tax passed, they were on the original list as stated by the chairman, and they are duly qualified for a brand-new school. With the passing of the sale tax.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment on the motion before we take a vote on it? All right. Everybody understand the motion? It's to approve the original Item 11.02.
With the addition of making sure that Richmond Heights remain on the list.
Okay. So that's making an amendment to the motion. An amendment to the motion's been moved. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
All right. It's been seconded by Ms. Flynn. All right. Any debate or discussion on the amendment to the motion? Give me one second, guys. Y'all are making me look at my parliamentary rules. Mr. Rodriguez, I'll just use you for what you're there for. There's been a motion, amendment to the motion made, or motion to amend the main motion that required a second, right? And that's a simple majority vote?
Simple majority, yeah.
Okay. All right. We're on the motion to amend the main motion. Does everybody understand what that motion is? It's to fully fund, I believe, tell me if I'm saying it right, it's to fully fund at this time Richmond Heights Elementary School. Okay? Is that the correct, is that what you're moving, Mrs. Gordon? All right. Ms. Moore.
Well, I have a question because is she saying this budget year, and what about Maxi, and what about Ivy Lane? See, to me, again, we're right back to the debate, we, I have the floor. We're right back to the same discussion we just had two seconds ago, that I would not support the amendment because we need to have this in totality. I know staff is ready to bring to us Ivy Lane, Maxi, moving all of them forward, which I am completely in favor of, but I'm not in favor of picking and choosing one out at 10:30 at night when we've had no briefings by staff. So I beg the rest of the board to please vote this amendment down.
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes.
Did you punch your button? No, okay. Mrs. Robinson.
I do not support the amendment either for the very reason that this is a bigger conversation that needs to be had. I'm not opposed to looking at all of these things, and I'm not trying to harm any one school, but I'm not in favor of this amendment.
All right. Any other debate or discussion on the motion? Ms. Gold.
I, I'm going to wonder out loud again, and anybody can answer me. What, what is the difference between waiting one more week and two days to have the full discussion? Because I think we're all in favor of doing the right things by all of our schools, but trying to, without the data in front of us, to really understand the impact of plucking this one out or that one out. I just, I can't do it without the data in front of me. And that's, that is my concern about your amendment, Mrs. Gordon. I don't, I feel your urgency, but is one week going to make a difference so that we can have the full discussion and get the full landscape of where we are and what ability we're fully going to have and talk it all the way through with the full briefing from the staff on accomplishing all of our goals for all of our kids?
Mrs. Gordon.
Yes, thank you. I'll help us because I know you all are tired, and I thought we were going to go, oh, yeah, I'm just fired up. You know, I'm up until 3:00. So my adrenaline is flowing anyhow, you know, I love crisis. Since Richmond Heights is in the 2015-2024 fiscal year capital appropriation projection as of July 29, 2014, and since Richmond Heights is 110 on the list, since Richmond Heights was actually named in the lawsuit, Mr. Chairman, I will withdraw my motion, my amendment, based on the fact that this stands as it is, what we see here and what we're voting on, and that the community be able to give their input, and that since we did not know we were going to pass the sale tax, that Richmond Heights is duly entitled, just like everyone else, for the sale tax. Now, I'm along with Darryl Flynn. We're, we're going to open up a can of worms now because it'll be some zoning maybe that you don't want, and you want to see what you're repurposing for. I think you're opening up a can of worms. But with that in mind, we have money for everybody. We were just talking about money that was left from Ecclestone, which Ecclestone should have been able to have used. And I don't understand for the life of me why money is left because I still think some schools get short-changed, and I know that for a fact. So I'm, that's another thing I'm going to work on, that there, nothing come before the board are to us without a leftover until every board member, we'll talk with the superintendent and the financial department on that, that every board member get an input because we want to see. We have a sale tax. We have the rest of the sale tax that will be completed. All of those schools will be built. We have an upcoming sale tax where all of the schools could compete it. And, and we got a couple of people can't see the vision right now because it's a little confusion. So I'll be glad to withdraw my amendment, Mr. Chair, based on that we see to it that Richmond Heights gets its just reward and that they could continue as number 110 in the sale tax. And that, that, listen to me, that could possibly mean that we could decide if the community desired, because this will go out in the community. Remember, there's a pending lawsuit. So like Darryl said, it's either the 500 and something or the 14 million. I prefer the 14 million. We entitled to it. We deserve it. But I'm willing to continue with the BPK. It's been a wonderful thing for our community, just like I stated, the community school at Evans was wonderful, and I know how hard I worked on Evans before and after present board members are sitting here. The reason why? Because the majority of the students, a high percentage of the students live in District 5, and it was something that was needed badly in that community, and I've been award-winning. We ask them the same thing. It's not, Ms. Gordon doesn't want anything, but I think in the, in the future, Mr. Chairman, board members, and superintendent, that this is our money that the taxpayers gave us to use. We shouldn't be a pair bickering over 500 when you got an $80 million school, okay? Or a $50 million school, you're bickering over $500, which belongs to Ecclestone. I say that that money should stay there until we decide what we're going to do with it, and that's what I shared with the superintendent and the chair in reference to leaving it. But I'm okay. I don't think any money should go anywhere until we know that we have gotten everything. We had the sinkhole at Oak Ridge almost, okay? We had to go back, come before the board, and deal with it. So we have never moved this fast. And I say it to Rick Collins and the Financial Committee and the Superintendent and her staff. Why is it that this money must move this fast when it has not been a best practice to move it this fast? Why? The haves and the have-nots. I'm, I'm up to about my gray hair with it, but I'm going to pull it, but I'm looking at this board to consider 110 remain exactly where 110 is. And we'll fight in the community, and this will be very good because half of the community have already fought for it, and the lawsuit is painting that we owe them a school. So with that, and I thank my fellow board members that had confidence in this and see the BPK as a valued school. So we have money to build, as long as there are no hurricanes, we will have it. People are coming to Florida to live, and I'm not going to vote it out. I normally lose a couple of battles, but we win the war for the children, and that's what it's all about. I will respect your wishes to get more on it, and I'm going to ask Mr. Chairman that you task the superintendent to bring this back as a major report and that my community be informed of this and that there are no secrets. Bring it all out, the unitary status, bring it all out. Let's get it together. Those that have spoken before and against it would want to come back before the board and speak toward it. But I think we should be the leader on it because we could decide for the community with their help what we feel is best for the children. And right now, it is going well with the BPK Center, and it's just that it needed a little dressing up. It needed a little dressing up. Now, we can vacate that, but we had the county, right, Dr. Jenkins, assisting us with that program also. Then the, yeah, see, the county got in and helped us. So we're not doing that by ourselves, and we should put something forward when we have all the money in the bag to do what we need to do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, fellow board members, and thank you for your trust in me.
All right. We have a motion on the floor. I have no further speakers. Everybody understand the motion? It's to approve 16.04, which was previously 11.02. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion's adopted. And let the record reflect, the previous amendment to the motion was withdrawn. Okay? Mr. Rodriguez, do you have a report?
I do. Couple of items. First of all, I need to just read off an executive session notice. The School Board of Orange County, Florida will meet in the executive session to discuss settlement in the School Board of Orange County, Florida versus Orange County, the School Board of Orange County, Florida versus Orange County, Florida on December 16, 2014, immediately following the work session scheduled at 4:30 PM on the ninth floor on the superintendent's conference room at this building, 445 West Amelie Street, Orlando, Florida. Meeting will be transcribed by a court reporter, and the transcript will be available for public review at the conclusion of the litigation. The following persons may be in attendance, all members of the school board, myself as the general counsel, Dr. Barbara Jenkins as superintendent, Associate General Counsel Marcos Martina, I'm sorry, Ms. Eileen Fernandez as Associate General Counsel, Mr. Marcos Martina, Chris Wilson and/or Keith Graham outside counsel, and a court reporter. Secondly, board members, just to give you an update on two other matters, we have already designated a date in January for a workshop with regards to the passive distribution date. So that will be forthcoming. I think that's already, it should be on your latest workshop and, and items that are there. And then it's expected that the, the policy as revised will be noticed and advertised for adoption at the first February meeting. I only share that with you because obviously in January, once that comes up, there will be plenty of discussion on that topic, and interested parties will want to know. Both, both parties have contacted us since the last board meeting where there was a work session. So those that wanted to distribute the bibles and those that want to distribute the other materials have both contacted me with great interest and passion about attending that workshop, so we will be making that known. Secondly, with regards to the matter in Eatonville, there is no litigation, so obviously there's no executive session, but just to bring the board an update because there has been plenty of discussion since the last, last action by this board was to task the chair to be your representative in negotiations. He and I have met repeatedly with numerous individuals from the town of Eatonville, including the mayor and another one of their board members. We have now elevated the original offer, I think was at 2.5 or 2.8 million for the property, and we had been asking for the appraisal price of 10.4 million. I can share with you that the last two offers that have come in have come in at 8 and 8.2 million, as well as another offer that's still outstanding, that we have not received, but we think will be at least at 8 million and maybe even in excess and closer to the asking price. So with that in mind, you know, the, the actions of the board, we will need some further determination. Expect something of that nature to come up in the next, probably in January at some point. We are expecting the town of Eatonville to take some definitive action as well because it's difficult for us. We don't control the properties, properties in the sense of whether it's going to be a dome, whether it's going to be a sports car museum, if it's going to be the Jazz Museum, if it's going to be apartments. The town of Eatonville will have tremendous say in that. They are also going through some transition in that one of their board members had to resign under the resign to run law, and now I think he has either been replaced or about to be replaced. So once they get some composition and some direction, we hope that then they will provide us with what they consider to be their best option. But, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to share anything else in terms of where we are with those offers and what your recommendations are?
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Rodriguez and his staff, Ms. Fernandez. They've been hard at work at this for quite a while, and it has not been easy. It's been some long discussions and some hard negotiating. Here's what I'd like to propose at this time. The board had already given authority to Mr. Rodriguez and myself to, to conduct the negotiations. We are studiously staying out of the politics of this issue, so I think, you know, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Robinson next, but I think, in my mind at least, I'll let her speak for herself because it's, it's her district, that they've hit a point in the negotiations where we're comfortable that they're close enough to the appraised value to let some type of proposal go forward. So what we would propose is to allow Mr. Rodriguez to prepare either an offer sheet or a proposed contract that has two very important contingencies. And one is that it be approved by a vote of the town of Eatonville Council, and two is that it be approved by the Hungerford Trust as well. And that way, we're essentially letting them weigh the various offers that are above our threshold of, say, 8 million. Frankly, I think it's going to come in substantially above that in the final analysis, but we remove ourselves from the politics and let them hash out what proposal they want to go with, and we can get that property back into productive tax generating revenue for the town of Eatonville. The other thing is, we've had some discussions kicked around, the idea of, we do have a billboard on that property that generates a fairly substantial amount of revenue, and the idea of putting in the proposals that we kick back to the town of Eatonville and the Hungerford Trust at the ongoing stream of revenue from that billboard go to the Hungerford Trust to fund their scholarship program. Mrs. Robinson.
I first want to say thank you to Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Sibley. Y'all have done a great job with this, and I, I don't know, do you still need further board action to continue those, or you, you feel comfortable that if it's any more negotiations, you still have our, say, I just want to say, y'all are doing a fabulous job. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So if you think we need more action tonight, or as long as you feel like you're still under the umbrella of any more negotiations, I want you to continue. You're doing a great job, and I am definitely in support of you, you, continuing to work with them and coming, letting them handle the politics of it, and we just negotiate the contract when it comes. And I love the idea of the billboard, when that came, when that came to me, I love that idea. That's a great idea of letting those, I think the Trust would be very thrilled with that. So, so it's a, it's a nice gesture on our part for them, and it protects them. So, thank you both.
So the, the only direction is, is that obviously... So the only direction is, is that obviously the, the asking price that y'all have put out there was originally 10.4. Eight million right now is the lowest of the two offers, and that's obviously a shift from what the asking price is, but we need to get direction that that's more or less within the ballpark as recommended by the Chairman in his opinion. He thinks it's within the ballpark, and it is apparently from Ms. Robinson as well. If the rest of the board is not in agreement, if you need closer to 10.4, then I need to get some direction on that as well to be able to negotiate. More importantly, I don't want to, I don't know how to say this, but the town of Eatonville in some respects is, let me put it this way, the developers are under some perception that they need to work out a deal with us first, and the first one to get to deal with us gets the approval of the town of Eatonville, and I think it's quite frankly the opposite. It's the town of Eatonville, and it's their community. They're the ones that have to vet these developers and make sure buying the property is only half the equation, actually delivering on the goods, which is building the infrastructure and building the dome or building the structure, whatever it is they're going to build, they need to vet that process, make sure that those developers are going to do that, and that's the town's responsibility, their lawyer's responsibility. So I would just caution the board on having, it'd be very easy for the town to say, you picked the winner and then tell us which one you want. I don't, for one second, I know that the Chairman has been telling me that's not the direction he wants to take. I don't think that's a direction I would advise the board to take. Certainly, it's a very sensitive topic, and that board is divided on which one to select, but it's a tough choice, and they should be making it and telling us, here's who the winner is. But at this point, all three, or at least the two that we have, and potentially the third, are at eight million or above. And to me, in, in this market, given where this particular property is and the complications with the town in terms of being able to get some assurances, if we put this out to market, we may get bidders that come in at above eight million. We may get bidders that say, I wouldn't touch that with a 10-foot pole because I can't guarantee that the town of Eatonville will approve whatever plan it is that we have, and that uncertainty has certainly impacted the price to some extent. So I just would like some consensus, Ms. Robinson, on where to go from here.
And I think what we're suggesting, board members, and Ms. Robinson, tell me if you're right at this, is that we present all offers, including multiple offers, to the, to the town of Eatonville that are above that threshold of eight million, whether they're eight million, 8.6 million, nine million, 9.5, and let the town of Eatonville hash it out. And what I've shared with the town of Eatonville is, if they can't come to agreement on this, then the next step would be next summer when our contract expires with them, to work with them. We're not going to do anything without their blessing, to work with them to put the property out to auction with their minimum, our minimum criteria as far as price and their, their zoning criteria and their development criteria, and see what the open market bears. But, and frankly, right now, I think that may very well happen, having observed from the press the town of Eatonville politics, but at the same time, we're just trying to be a good government partner and let them develop the property if they can develop it at a fair price. Is everybody okay with that approach? All right, Mr. Rodriguez, I don't hear anybody objecting to that approach. Okay? Anything else?
Just one last bit of news to share, and that is, since we hired Sarah Corin a number of years ago, about probably about three years, maybe now three and a half years, it has been her goal to get us to zero due processes filed at one point. I think for about a four-hour period, six months ago, we were there. And, but this afternoon, it's my understanding that one of the last two processes that was in existence has been withdrawn, so for now, the clock has started in our office, and we hope to celebrate that no due process. It's like having no litigations pending, but we have retasked her and repurposed her. So she's going, she's going to be doing more of the complaints and more of the policies and everything else. So she's a very smart lawyer, and I just want to thank her and commend her for that. She's not here tonight, but if you see her, do, do give her your support and appreciation because it's a lot of work to make sure. That means essentially that no, currently, there is no parent of an ESC child that has a pending complaint against the district, and that is an incredible feat, given where we were when she started with this organization. So give her your, your kudos.
You got potential, Mr. Rodriguez. Haven't heard that from you since your mama used to tell you that. All right. Anything else, Mr. Rodriguez? Okay. Uh, Dr. Jenkins, report by the Superintendent.
No report.
God bless you. All right. Ms. Flynn, report legislative.
Okay. I feel like I'm in class.
Don't try any jokes because I think we've lost the audience.
No, as far as legislative, you know, I don't have a report other than that we're going to be meeting soon, and it is on the subject of, of testing and accountability. It continues our discussion that we've been having, but I did want to say that, Mr. Chair, you did a very good job in speaking before the, our legislative delegation on the subject of testing. You represented us very well, and I thank you for that.
I will share with you all, Mrs. Gordon and Ms. Flynn have been very charitable and kind. The truth of the matter is, what I had to say fell on deaf ears, and the tone of, in my, in my being overly sensitive, Ms. Flynn, I thought that the questions were fairly unreceptive. You know, it is what it is. We were all used to dealing with the issues, but the four questions I got were, how much of the tests are district mandated, not state mandated? Well, how can you say they're only in an average of four hours a test, state and federal mandated test per year, when I have a two-week test block for per test? What was the other question? Oh, my favorite. Oh, I forgot this one. This is my absolute god, gosh awful favorite. Well, haven't the tests already been field, because my main point was, we need a one-year abatement period. Well, we field tested tests, set the cut scores, adjust to what the baseline is, and we'll compete with anybody if you let us know what the cut scores are going in. So the response to that was, well, hasn't that already been done in Utah? And are you saying Florida kids aren't as smart as Utah kids?
No, no.
So, Daryl, I'm going to let you go. You found him to be a much friendlier audience than I did.
No, I think that question was trying to lead you to say that it hadn't been field-tested in Florida. I, knowing that particular representative, I think he was trying to make a point that it had not been field-tested in Florida, and that it was a test that was, that was coming from a Utah-type basis. And when he asked you what were, you know, the differences, you know, with kids and everything, so I really think he was trying to make a distinction between the test. That's the way I took it, just from knowing his past conversations that we've had with him. But you're right. I mean, the others, the question that you just said about the, the test from the district versus the state, I really felt that was sort of a punt to, for the same old, you know, defensive thing as, oh, it's not us, it's the district. I mean, that was very much there. So thank you.
Ms. Moore.
For some of you, I hesitate to bring this up, but there's a little football game on Saturday night that I'm a little happy about going to. And, and so, well, we represent Orange County. Well, you know, we're playing a, for the state championship 8A, we're playing a Miami-Dade private school, and all Sunday, I was trying to figure out, but they only have 1,372 students. Why are they 8A? Well, I know they have a $4 million athletic, you know, complex, and that all the Miami Dolphin coaches' kids have all gone there, and I got all kinds of information from Dr. Jara. So finally, I figured it out. It's an all-boys Catholic school. So then I've been on this, this quest to find out if they have cheerleaders, but Dr. Jara assured me that there were cheerleaders. But anyway, it's going to be a great game. I have traveled with the Darters to all their last three or four games. I don't understand where all this, this greatness came from, other than when you go and listen to the coaching, it's just, he stresses character, and, and the word to the coach's team was this week, I want you to focus on your homework. I want you to dress in your shirt and tie and be leaders on campus. And if I hear from any of your teachers that you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing, they're going to come tell me. And so it's just been a beautiful thing to see the character, and they got a letter from the athletic director at Manatee who said that they were incredibly impressed with the sportsmanship of the team. So hopefully, they'll represent Orange County well on Saturday night, and I have high hopes we'll bring home that trophy. No, it's at the Citrus Bowl Saturday at 7:07. So anyway, if anybody would like to join me, I will certainly be there. Thank you.
All right, I'm laughing. I want to say, because this is going to come off wrong, Coach Darlington is a brilliant coach, a great molder of young men, and they have an incredible program, incredible coaches, incredible character. But I had my brief shining glory moment as a Pop Warner football coach. Let me tell you, when we played Apopka, I had 18 kids on my team. I had one kid out of 18 who was as fast as 11 kids out of 18 on the Apopka team. And when I say that, so, great coaching, don't get me wrong, but there's a lot of speed up there in Apopka. I don't know what it is. I've only told my kids, you just keep them between the tackles, and if you can do that, we've accomplished something, you know? Make them play power football, because if they got anywhere outside the tackles, and the worst part was, they ran the same triple option or single wing that Apopka runs, and they could pitch it to anyone, either the quarterback or the three kids on the wing, and they all could outrun every one of my guys, except for one kid that we finally moved back to safety, because at least we had a chance of one kid getting through that wall of blockers once they got around the end. And we found an incredible, we lost, you can tell how much I got into this, we lost by only two touchdowns, which we found was, you know, they say they're all no moral victories in football. There are moral victories in Pop Warner football, especially when you play Apopka. Ms. Cool.
Well, I just wanted to say to Christine, if they play like the night that my West Orange team, oh, stop, played them, they will, they will come back shining stars. They already are shining stars for as far as they've made it and how hard they've played. It is a pleasure to watch both teams play, but Apopka was so on their game the night they played West Orange, and it was, it was really a pleasure to be at that game.
Ms. Flynn.
No, I was asking what the significance of 7:07 is. There were, there are two things, the time that she said. There are two things. Last night, I had a community meeting regarding a relief school, and I just want to say, I have a post-traumatic syndrome disorder from it. It was a very hostile crowd. But here's what I, I want to say is, our staff was tremendous. The meeting was not ours, it was a county meeting, so we didn't run it, but Tyrone Smith and Woody Rodriguez and Carol McGowan and Faz Ali, they, they were terrific, and I just want to compliment them for, you know, just having all of our backs. You know, it is, it is very sad that we've gotten to a point where people don't see schools as a community asset, and there was a small, very vocal group, and it was very, very ugly. And it's just really a shame. But I have to say, no matter what happens, I was very proud of our staff. The second thing is, I don't, I'm, I'm sure the other school board members have gotten these comments, but you know, once again, we've got a new kind of math curriculum, you know, math throughout the ages, new math, old math, and, and, you know, people can understand why they have to, the parents, I'm a math engineer and I can't, you know, I can't help my kid with his homework. There was a wonderful video that's being circulated that described why we're having students explain their answers, but I'd like to ask the Superintendent, if there could be more information that would be available for us to give parents? I think this is a real stumbling block when it comes to Florida standards, you know, the assessment, the math, you know, it's all sort of coming upon us at once, and this math is the one thing that I, I hear of a lot. And so I was just going to ask if there could be some more information given as to why we're doing it and how it's doing it and why it's a good thing. So I just wanted to, and maybe have a work session for us so we can see it and understand it, because when I go into the classroom, and I do go in the classroom, I think the math teachers are very, very supportive of it, but the parents just don't understand it. So, thank you.
All right. So, Dr. Jenkins, can we tee up a presentation on that? You know, I will echo that for what it's worth. You know, my ear has been chewed off by my wife for the last eight months. I actually cut an article out of the Wall Street Journal that a professor emeritus at Cal Berkeley, who had taught math and, and won medals in math on a national level, was very critical of the Common Core approach to math, and I've struggled with it. But I will echo something you've said, Ms. Flynn. I've taken to, in fact, it just happened last night or two nights ago, pulling math teachers aside whenever I meet them and ask them what they think, they don't have near the heartburn with it that parents do. I think the frustration of parents, at least my wife and others, is even well-educated parents are struggling to help even fifth and sixth graders with their, with their kids' math homework, because it's things that they've never seen, and, and they don't know how to teach it, and they have to read the book themselves to figure it out. My wife will spend an hour reading the chapter herself to sit down with my sixth grader and then try to explain it to him. That's what I think we're facing. Mr. Rodriguez, did you want to weigh in on the math debate?
No, it's, I am sorry. On our previous announcement that I read, I neglected to include Laura Kelly, who's an attorney as well, and she will be in attendance at the executive session. It will be reflected in notice, only because this will be her first executive session. I want to make sure she has some experience. She also represents facilities, so just needed to add that for the record.
Yes, I wanted to let Ms. Flynn know, have no fear, because I had an opportunity to attend one of the parent advisor, the parent academy did, I believe it was, I don't want to get it wrong. Can I bother, can I just, I don't want to mess it up. Mr. Chairman, can I ask Ms. Shula to come forward, please? We had an opportunity to observe her staff talking to parents back and forth, and I call it a webinar, but it was more than a webinar. If you could come forward, would you please just share with the board what it was? It was wonderful. If you could come forward quickly, please. Children, children, we all are. Remember, I'm just getting started. I don't, I don't want to really mess it up, but exactly to what Mrs. Flynn is stating is exactly what the parents did not know, and I think they had every subject, the different languages, so would you just tell what took place this week, please?
Yes, this past week, we actually had a virtual parent academy.
That's it.
For parents. We had over 100 parents that actually signed up, and we played several sessions, or we repeated several sessions from the academy where our focus was college and career readiness. We had our very own Mr. Armbruster, he was a guest speaker, so he was featured again on the virtual academy. So we had that this past week.
And, and, and the type of questions, they went into the subject areas, they went into to show the parents the progress book?
Absolutely, and at the end, we also had a chat session for parents, where parents could actually call in, or we can communicate with them online, the various questions that they had in regards to our district and their schools.
And I must add that there was someone answering back immediately. That was shocking. I don't get that from AT&amp;T and Sprint. So thank you so very much for sharing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Jenkins?
I was going to say, it's a national discussion. We heard it last week, some potential solutions, particularly around the parent, because the teachers that are math content oriented do understand the connection, but one way to at least limit the frustration for parents is to still deal with fluency issues that students still need on the homework front, which parents are very comfortable with, rather than trying to do the homework on the, on the deeper critical thinking. We actually took both the fourth grade and the seventh grade version of what the new Common Core standards would look like. The level of critical thinking and problem solving and deep The level of critical thinking and problem solving and deeper understanding is what math teachers like, because they realize you're building a foundation for higher levels of math. Algebraic thinking will come naturally to our elementary students when they get to that level, because they're really being fed those kinds of concepts, a conceptual level early on. But it's a national concern that parents are just frustrated. I understand there was one local legislator who said, yeah, everybody knows you go from one page to the next and the next and the next. You can't skip pages in a math book. That is a very different way of thinking of math instruction compared to teaching standards. And so, it's a national concern. We'll certainly bring back additional ideas after our next meeting, but we'll work on it. And I think the way to go about it, because parents are so busy, even if we get 1,000 parents at the parent academy, if we feature math instruction, we have to be able to do it virtually so more parents can tune in at home while they're getting dinner ready, rather than coming out to a location. We'll work on that.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Ms. Flynn.
I'm sorry, I have one more kudo. Mike, I'm sorry, Mike Armbruster was the speaker for the, was it SGA District III Conference? And he gave just such a moving, powerful speech. I have to say this. He was talking to these students about, yes, you're learning leadership, yes, you're spirited, but just think about what you can do with one simple gesture to a friend. One simple gesture, if you see a student there that looks lost, somebody to help with their books, what that would do. It was a very powerful message and I just wanted to thank you for, for presenting that.
My daughter was there. She also heard you speak. Yeah? She said you both were great. All right, Ms. Gold, FSBA.
Really, the, the only thing I wanted to share was about the session I went to, and I think many went to one of the sessions with, with our DOE Secretary Pam Stewart and her group. And, you know, I always try to make lemonade out of lemons, so I was looking for some of the things that I actually learned in that. And one of the things I was really pleased about was her report at the beginning where she was actually bragging on Florida. Because I think sometimes, as we sit in this seat, our perception is that our state and our legislators don't recognize the gains that we have made in Florida and especially here in Orange County. And so, that was one of the wonderful things, that she showed some great statistics on our positioning with NAP and some other things. It's on, if you want it, it is available online at the F L D O E dot org. And I just typed in the FSBA conference presentation. So that, I thought was, was good. There were a lot of things that we've been discussing and that I would ask the superintendent at some point to, to continue to debrief us. I know you bring us all the changes, but they seem to be happening pretty rapidly. And some of them seem minor, but are really huge implications to what you and the teachers have to deal with and your administration has to deal with. So, there were a lot of little nuances that left more questions. I had shared some of them with Dr. Tovine today, but I think we just need kind of a where we've been, where we are, where we think we're going once again. And that was it. I just, that was the one thing that kind of stuck out for me, and the fact that they went over in their presentation, we had no time for questions, was a little frustrating, but besides that, they downloaded a lot of data.
Well, I'm glad you shared that, because you just saved me a lot of work. I actually keep a statistic sheet of all those numbers for use in speaking, so that's great. Thank you. I just pulled it up. I just found it. Thank you. All right, anything else? Board, any issues? Yeah. Linda, welcome. You know, glad to have you here. This is your first full board meeting, isn't it?
Hey, you're out early. I was in 2:20.
All right. We never met, we never met until 11 o'clock till you got on the board. What's going on here? All right, well, we're going to adjourn. I'm handing out the work session schedule. I forgot to hand it out a little bit ago, but anything else for the good of the order? All right, we're adjourned.
Cute. He's already surrounded by technology. By age four, she knows how to use a smartphone. He's reading. No, not from this, this. She's making a digital presentation. You don't even know what that is. He has an interest. No, not that, that. By middle school, she has built her own website and her first app. In high school?
With my Michelson interferometer, I can measure down to the fraction of the wavelength of light.
Wow. The world is changing. And they are preparing for jobs that don't even exist yet.